Here.
Allison.
Present.
Sheil.
Here.
Rizzo.
Here.
Vialobos.
Here.
Tenorio.
Present.
All right, seven members present, we have a quorum, Councilor Shion.
Okay. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City of, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: one pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Chapter 551 dot zero seven one; ordinance number nine five five; parking; personnel investigation; TDS contract; intermandigo; a development agreement; employee compensation issue; then possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Chapter, Section 551 dot zero seven one; Southside easements; Center Street slash Old Stagecoach Road project; and then convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551 dot zero eight seven; government code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city; project just peachy.
Good evening, the time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, December 17th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled City Council meeting to order. Normally I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but I see some fantastic looking Boy Scouts back there, I believe one of them is named Quentin, and I'd like to invite him and his troop to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Excuse me, Mayor? Let me close the previous meeting. Second session.
Okay. There was no action taken in the previous executive session, there'll be no action taken now.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to adjourn executive session?
No. It's been moved by Councilor Tenorio, seconded by the Mayor, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, Quentin, we have a microphone for Quentin. He probably doesn't need one, does he?
All please rise.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give them a round of applause. Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Allison?
Present.
Sheil?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Vialobos?
Here.
Tenorio?
Present.
All right, it's all members present, we have a quorum, next up, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of August the 20th.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Tenorio, seconded by Councilor Rizzo, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period, at this time we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the Mayor and Council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that either to myself or the City Secretary. I have one person signed up to speak, Sandra O'Neil.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. Once again, I'm here to ask the Council to vote yes to the rezoning of the Brooks Property Residential. I understand that the Mayor and City Council want the best for Kyle when developers come into our city. I'm not sure why this has taken so long to vote on this when only, the only no vote was the Mayor three agendas ago. The Brooks family has been a staple in Kyle for so many years, and we in Brooks Crossing live on their property with 142 neighbors, and I for one thoroughly enjoy it. There are many of us in Brooks Crossing that lived in Plum Creek for years and never knew each other, and we're not impressed really living there because we were so disconnected. Now that we live in a smaller neighborhood, we have become connected and have become great friends, which gives us a great quality of life. As I've stated before, looking at the site plan, it has given us neighbors on the Greenbelt a relief. We bought our homes because of this, we do not want commercial businesses near us, it's a small town feel where we live now, and even though this town is growing at a rapid rate, we feel like we have something special. When I found out there was actually going to be a vote tonight, I was relieved, and I'm hoping that all those council members that voted yes months ago will still do the same, and I appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the only comment form that I have in front of me, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period, it's now closed. Next up, presentation, the Mayor Pro Tem's item, he's asked it to be delayed, we have a special guest coming, and he is en route. The item after that, presentation of graduates of the Citizen Police Academy Class Number Twelve, Chief Barnett.
Good evening, thank you Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. For the record, my name is Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. We're here tonight to celebrate the accomplishment of our next Citizens Police Academy graduating class, this is Class Number Twelve. This class has been a remarkable class, they've dedicated their, their personal time to come in and spend their evenings and some of their weekends with our police officers to learn what we do. They've spent time with our dispatchers, our animal control officers, our code enforcement officers, and all the facets of our PD, and it's because they want to be good citizens, they want to be a participant, they're active members, they love their community, and they've wanted to get to know what their police department can do for them and what we're all about. We've had a great time getting to know them, and tonight we're here to celebrate their accomplishment and give them their certificate of accomplishment. I'm going to introduce Officer James Plant, who heads our Citizens Police Academy program.
Thank you, for the record, Mayor and Council, James Plant, Kyle PD. Chief kind of covered it all, this has been a, a little different of a class, it's been a little more trying due to stuff out of our control, but, so we had a couple days where we had to start late, or, you know, finish even later, but it's been a great class, something really cool about this class is we have two couples, husband and wife teams that went through the program together, and they really enjoyed it, but as a whole, it was a great class, and something I'm going to throw out there for you guys is next summer, when we start the next class, in September, we're going to move it to Mondays instead of Tuesdays, so to give you guys an opportunity, if you decide you want to attend the class, it'll be on Monday nights. Sorry Chief, I forgot to tell you about that. But, thank you guys so much for allowing us to recognize these graduates during the City Council meeting.
With your permission, we're going to bring them up and give them their certificates, and we'll ask if you'd like to get a picture, if you could get a group picture of them.
Amy, Amy Botha. Johnny Camarillo. Eleanor Coleman. Rick Coleman. Christopher Drake. Monica Flores Rojo. Pam Gibson. Lori Huey. Wayne Camera. Emma Perez. Judy Rayner. Pete Rayner. David Rivera. And Mark Torres.
I got you, I got you.
Mayor, if we could do a photograph, no, we're going to have to squeeze in, okay, we've got a big group here, so we'll squeeze in through three rows of people. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll get in here and type through. We've got picture takers, if I have any of the police officers. I want to tell you what they went through, they spent their nights and weekends riding with police officers. Going out to the gun range, they worked crime scenes, they worked accidents, they learned what we do, in every aspect of the police department's role, they learned what we do. We would encourage you all to consider taking our police academy if you have, so keep it out for our future classes, they said they're going to be on Monday, so we'd love to have you take our next student, so come right up there. Right, congratulations, thank you all very much.
All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Four, Ad Hoc Committee Update on Police Facility, this one is Chief, we also have some committee members here who can start.
Thank you Mayor and Council, Jeff Barnett, for the record, Chief of Police. So our Ad Hoc Committee that was impaneled at our most recent City Council meeting has met twice, we met in the days immediately following that council meeting, where we discussed the process and what it would look like for the city to consider getting a new police department in the future, and I was specifically tasked to go out and get some information on various facilities, and we talked about processes and whatnot, and I brought that information back to the committee as we met at 4:30. We shared that, we discussed that, and if it's all right, I'll turn it over to those members on the committee that may want to add their, their perspective on what we've talked about so far, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Although we can, we can talk about the general process that we've gone through, and some of the renderings and design work that we have seen, I know a lot of that needs to be done in an executive session, just because of the sensitive nature of the design pieces to that, right? These would be existing structures in place, and I think there's, there's critically an officer safety issue, there's a public safety issue in discussion, so a lot of that would have to be done in the executive session, although the designs that are there do, as far, as far as we are concerned, do fit the requirements of the, of the City of Kyle, the requirements that we have deemed as a, as a needs assessment, it does fit in line with the accreditation process that we feel like we want to draw forward to, there's, there's three major accreditation agencies and institutions that are out there that I think all of them will fit. It's scalable to a certain degree, and it, it allows us to, to grow into the future needs. Outside of that, I think the discussion really needs to go into, number one, seeking guidance from General Counsel, and number two is looking at the structural pieces and the architecture, is something I think all of us should get together in executive session, be more appropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Councilor Tenorio.
Do we have a timeline that we're working on, or is there some type of structured format that we're utilizing to run this, this group, or, like, what's the end goal?
Well, I know there's-
When's the deliverable?
There's some critical dates that we have to abide by to get ready and be prepared for bringing a bond forward to the citizens, and I think that time is the, is of the essence. I don't remember the exact month that we should be coming forward this, and I think General Counsel can give us the, the general guidelines on the exact month that we needed to come forward and have something prepared to bring forward.
It would need to be, it's roughly 70 days before, calling the election has to be called about 70 days before the election, so that would be your target, and you may need to have a public hearing in advance of that as well for your charter.
Generally August, August was the month that we were-
Yeah, August.
It's usually late August. Late August, yes. Twenty-fifth-ish.
And I think the goal has been that we get this on the November 2020 ballot, as I'm sure everybody's aware, it's a pretty big election next November, and we anticipate a lot of participation from our citizenry, and I think that that is part of the goal as well, since we will have such a great participation in that election, and if we're going to be bringing forward a, a bond and, and perhaps tax increase, most likely tax increase, that we want as many citizens participating in this decision as possible. We are working, we've talked about this in our initial meeting we had with the Ad Hoc Committee that we created with the three council members, Mr. Rubsum, Assistant City Manager James Earp, and Captain in Chief, we are working on a really tight guideline, and I think that's part of the reason why we're looking at existing facilities that we, that meet the standards and the, the requirements that were set forth in the Brinkley Sergeant analysis that we had last year done, so we're culminating all that together, and I think we have some promising initial opportunities to, to do that, and I think that we're going to, we're really under, lack of a better term here, really under the gun to try and meet that deadline, so we're trying to move as expeditiously as possible, that's why we set Chief out on, on this journey, and he has found some, some really great opportunities that we would like to share with the rest of the council as well, and we want to get it out to RFP as soon as possible as well, because there's a number of different things that need to happen, and, and August will certainly be here before we know it.
One of the things I want everybody to mind is that, even though we're in a dim, short timeline, we're still going to do our due diligence to bring the best facility towards our police department that's going to accommodate them for future growth and benefit the citizens of Kyle. I, I want to thank Chief for working really hard on this, and touring the different facilities, and bringing back the feedback, really appreciate your hard work, Chief.
With also the consideration of cost, because I know that you've looked at some items in cost, so I think that's good.
Councilor Coach.
I want to commend the Ad Hoc Committee, I mean, we put this together last meeting, and you all have already met twice, so thank you for the quick work and the fast way you guys are handling this, I really do appreciate that, and I look forward to what you guys are going to bring.
Councilor Tenorio.
I'd like to just ask that we have the dates provided to us, the punctual, you know, the, the shooting dates, the election has to be called, so that we all have a calendar, and that way we can assist the Ad Hoc Company or Committee by making sure that we're all staying on, on top of it, because this is obviously a very big issue for all of us, and as it's going to affect every single citizen through the tax dollar, I'd like to make sure that we're all just, we have those, those target dates.
Can we maybe add those in our smart sheets?
Yes.
And then that way we can all see it in the smart sheets, I think that will be helpful.
The, the, the plan is it still to have a fully engineered and bid project ready to go, so that after bond, if voters approve, we'll be breaking ground immediately afterwards? That's still the plan?
Yes, sir.
All right, I think it's a great goal, I, I agree with the statements that have been made, so thank you all very much for your hard work. All right, moving on, Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation of Texas Downtown Association's Downtown Assessment Report, Councilor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I'd like to also state that Councilmember Sheil was also an advocate for bringing this Agenda Item forward, so I want to give her her public credit as well on this. So going back to give a little history here, in the spring, we had a number of different discussions about our downtown, some rezoning cases that came forward, and I, I remember making a stance that I think that we, we need to kind of look at our downtown holistically and kind of really think about what we want to do with that, and I, some of y'all might recall that I proposed a ceremonial adoption of our downtown revitalization plan that has been in our comprehensive plan since the beginning of this decade, but really hasn't been acted on. Having a downtown is extremely important to any city, but particularly when you're a city like ours, where we are outside of two large, larger cities, we don't want to just be another suburb of Austin, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of history and a lot of importance to our downtown, and it, it does present its challenges, and so one of the ideas that we had, I know we had a few different town halls, we had some individual ones, we had some group town halls, we had a full council town hall, we had sixty-some people here on a Saturday morning for three or four hours to talk about our downtown, we've had many conversations with the Chamber of Commerce, and so that to me has just shown the importance of downtown, and, and what further revealed to me the importance is, not only did we have just residents from our downtown at these meetings, and business owners at, at these meetings, but we also had citizens from all over our city attend these meetings, and I think that was hugely important, and further proves to the fact that downtown is important to everyone in this city. So through all those discussions in town halls and various meetings throughout this year, we decided to, there was a, a nonprofit organization that we were made aware of, Mr. Sellers and I had many conversations with Catherine here, and she's going to be coming up here shortly to give us a rundown and recap of the assessment they provided to us, but they were here on, on a Friday, spent the entire day here, and we had citizens from all over the city kind of participate throughout that day, we had business owners, we had downtown residents, we had residents from all over the city, we had the Chamber here, and many different facets, so with all that being said, it's been a, I think we finally got the report, it was in October, and we've just trying to be, trying to work with the schedules of Catherine and us and getting, getting her to a meeting, because we thought to do the report justice, it would be best served presented by her, and I, I just want to welcome her up as well to, to talk about this, and, and she, she had a great team that she brought along with many different areas of expertise and, and experience, and so, you know, it was really eye-opening, and I think reading through this report, some of it we, we could have already imagined and expected was coming in there, but there were also some unique ideas as well in the report, and they provided some examples as well. So unless anybody has any initial thoughts, comments, or questions, I'd like to turn it over to Catherine for a presentation of the Downtown Assessment Report.
Thanks, thanks for having me, I'm really excited to be here tonight, and appreciate the invite, and it's been a pleasure working with the city on the assessment. Let me make sure I'm doing this right, okay, I'm Catherine Sack, I'm the Executive Director of the Texas Downtown Association, a position I've held since 2007, worked with hundred, over a hundred different communities at this point, and visited even more, I used to be a lot thinner before I started this job, and started traveling around Texas, eating pie and other wonderful treats that are available in the state. Our organization was founded in 1985 to connect and serve communities that were dedicated to downtown, and we represent cities and towns of all sizes, economic development corporations, chambers, nonprofits, small businesses, we like to say that our members are our strongest resource. So downtown assessments are only offered to TDA members, and the purpose of these is to bring a team of outsiders into a community, a lot of times when you see your downtown every day, you kind of miss some of the things that are good and bad, and so by bringing in people from outside, you get a different perspective. For the Kyle Assessment Team, we had a really strong group of people, including Eric Davis from Cobalt Development, Kyle Cram from the City of Seguin and the current TDA Board President, Sheila Scarborough from Tours and Currents, and Faye Schnack Schneider from Flat Fork Studios. Downtown is the mirror of your community, isn't just a tagline, it's also a campaign by TDA to encourage people to consider how their downtown reflects their community. Every downtown is different. Downtown is the heart of your community, it creates a unique sense of place that attracts new residents and visitors, it's a recruitment tool. We hear from site selectors, the first place they go when they visit a community is downtown, they want to see if the commercial district is maintained, they want to see if the culture of the community is a good match for their employees. Downtown is a retention tool, if you have a strong downtown, then it's possible that employee, employers will see less turnover, because they have, they have workers that are interested in staying in the community. We're seeing more and more that people are choosing where they want to live based on the quality of life they're going to have there, and they're willing to make certain adjustments so they can worry about their employment as a secondary issue. Finally, quality of place matters, a strong vibrant downtown leads to a strong vibrant city. We aren't the only ones that believe this. The National League of Cities did a review of State of the City Addresses earlier this year, and what they found is that downtown is a top priority, no matter the region or the population group. Up there, the yellow dots are, are next to, I'm sorry, the text is tiny, but take my word that the yellow dots are next to where downtown development is ranked, and you can see that even though in the south, they put Texas in the south, that downtown development is five, I would say that in the state, I feel like it's a very, it's a top three issue, based on my experience. The private sector also cares and values downtown. Area Development Magazine is the leading publication covering corporate site selection and relocation. Their annual survey results of corporate entities show that quality of life, which typically includes downtown, is a key factor when determining where to locate or expand. So you have a great downtown, it's compact, which makes it manageable, which makes it easier to focus efforts, it's the historic and cultural center of your community, it's where Kyle began. While other downtowns struggle to attract residential development, downtown Kyle already has a number of residential units downtown and strong and established neighborhoods surrounding it. I've got traffic on the pros, because there are people that would kill to have a line of traffic going through their downtown like that every day, I know it's inconvenient, you know, it was a little bit, I had to wait a minute to be able to turn on a Center Street, but that means you have over, what, thou, you have thousands of people driving through every day, and there's the, you have the opportunity to connect with those folks depending on the development that takes place in your downtown. You have really dedicated city staff, I left off planners here, which is my fault, I'm a planner, so we never, we never want to take any credit for anything, but, you know, you have great city staff that are making a difference every day, they're working hard to attract new businesses and to provide outlets for recreation in your community to your citizens. Finally, you have a downtown, your downtown exists, there are a lot of communities that because of fire, because of decisions made decades ago, their downtowns don't exist anymore, and you have an opportunity to use the existing building stock and infrastructure in place, which means the city's going to save money because it doesn't have to start a whole new, a whole new development. The cons, I think one of the biggest challenges has been the lack of vision for downtown. I know, I mean, I read Community Impact, I read the Austin Paper, and I know that downtown has been, you know, a priority off and on throughout the years here in Kyle, and, but it doesn't seem like everybody could come to a conclusion about what would be best for the future. That's not uncommon, that happens a lot when we do these assessments, and so we're excited that you're taking this first step, and we want to encourage you as you move forward. Downtown competes for attention from other development projects, obviously cities have limited resources, and hard decisions have to be made by the council on a daily basis about where things are, where money's going to go, where resources are going to go, how staff are going to be used. are going to go, how staff are going to be used. And there's not a dedicated staff member for downtown. I saw that that had been on the agenda's possibility for earlier this year, and the decision was made to kind of wait until a better plan was in place. And we'd be happy to connect you with other communities that have downtown coordinators so you can see sample job descriptions, see what that position is responsible for, and craft it to be the best staff person for your community. Traffic's on here too, because it has to be. Sometimes people get frustrated, they don't want to deal with downtown because they complain about traffic or parking, and that can lead to perceptions about walkability and perceptions of pedestrian safety. But those aren't such huge issues that you can't overcome them. This is a great quote from an author and urbanist, Roberta Gratz, "And truer words have never been spoken. One thing is certain: if you do it for the local, the visitor will come; if you do it for the visitor, you will lose the local and eventually the visitor, because it is the local who gives a place character." And downtown Kyle has character, and you want to maintain that. And downtown should be where your residents want to be, because the visitors will follow. So improving walkability. There's an incomplete sidewalk network around downtown, not just, I know Center Street is a challenge because TechDOT has control over that and allow, you know, gives you permission or not to do what you want to do. But on the other sides of the square, sometimes sidewalks disappear, and that means that for people with mobility issues, or for families, or just for people who would feel more comfortable on a sidewalk, it immediately puts them into the street. Now, the good thing is, is that our experience walking around is that people were courteous, and they slowed down and gave us plenty of room, but not everybody is willing to take that chance, and so downtown feels uncomfortable to them. So these are a couple of different ideas that we thought of. On the left is the, is actually from Sandpoint, Iowa, so that's a large sign that's at the entrance of their downtown, reminding people to slow down and stop for pedestrians. The middle picture is from Brenham, which is also on a state highway. TechDOT allowed them to install these signs midway in crosswalks to remind drivers that pedestrians have the right of way. On the right is a painted crosswalk in Grand Prairie. Just to the left of this is a state highway, and they were able to get permission from TechDOT to do that crosswalk. This is something that would be good because it can also help delineate the boundaries of your downtown district. And it's bright, it reminds drivers that they need to stop. Downtown overlay district would really help guide revitalization efforts. When you make downtown special, you can allow different uses in downtown. You might be able to offer more flexibility in the downtown as a way to attract new businesses. And you want to review your zoning that's in place, and you want to make sure that the desired business types that you want in your downtown are able to locate downtown. And I'm going to give you an example in a minute about another community. But I did want to talk about branding and marketing. We included different ideas for marketing for businesses, but since I was presenting to council, I kind of wanted to talk about the pie capital of Texas. So I think it's time for to go all-in on this. I found like more than one pie day every month, which is my favorite, and I think you could really run with that. I think you can also use it as a metaphor. Your piece of the pie, today's youth, tomorrow's entrepreneurs. You can have a pie-throwing contest. I mean, I think there's so many different ways to play on it. I promise I didn't Photoshop any council member's face on that one image.
You could find plenty of those photos.
It's your city, so, you know. But I think that that's something that can be unique about you, and that's something that we really encourage all of our communities to look at, is what makes you different. And if it's, if you're, if you're different because you're the pie capital of Texas, then embrace that. And, you know, I want to see big pieces of pie everywhere. Small business and entrepreneurial support. Whoops, did I miss one? I think this is where you can also really stand out. Obviously, you've been very successful in recruiting many primary job providers, and also a lot of national and regional chains. But I think that one thing is lacking in Kyle is an independent small business culture. I think you have people, residents, I mean, you've grown tremendously in the last decade, and I guarantee that you have people who live here in your community that are running businesses out of their homes or in other communities. And you want to capture those businesses and bring them back to Kyle and help them thrive. So there's a few different ways to do this. One is a strong shop-local campaign. The city of Windsboro in east Texas is much smaller than you all, but the city manager, the chamber, the Main Street program, all came together and developed a citywide shop-local program that educated citizens about the importance of spending money locally, what kind of impact that has, reminding people that when you shop locally, sixty cents of every dollar, sixty-seven cents of every dollar stays in the community and is recycled, whereas with an out-of-town business, that drops to forty-two cents on the dollar. The city of Mesquite recently started an entrepreneurial workshop series that offered seminars on developing a business plan, financing and budget, marketing. The numbers were astounding at the people who turned out. People were hungry for this information, and they, it was as, it was as if they had been waiting for someone to give this to them. This is a great way to develop your entrepreneurs, and I know you have entrepreneurs on your council. So this is, would be an outstanding way to show support for small business owners in the community. The innovation pipeline shown on the right is a public-private partnership in Tyler, Texas, that provides access to technology and equipment that entrepreneurs need but might not be able to access due to cost constraints. Three-D printers, other large equipment that isn't typically, would be a little harder to house inside a garage. By supporting small business and entrepreneurs, you can change the culture of downtown and contribute to a more diverse local economy. We think a business incubator would be an excellent addition to downtown Kyle. Events. So events are a great way to attract people downtown, try out new concepts, and promote small businesses. But you can't have city staff managing and dealing with events all the time. It's time-consuming, takes up a lot of resources, and it's difficult to get that done and manage all the day stuff, and city staff don't want to have to work around the clock, which can easily happen when there's too many events going on. But there are events that can be very strategic and that can make a huge splash in your downtown. So I'm going to start on the top. The Baum Dog Park was actually a pop-up dog park that was part of a pop-up weekend event in Corsicana. So they didn't just focus on having pop-up businesses in vacant buildings, they had a pop-up beer garden, they had a pop-up fashion show, there was a pop-up nursery that was managed by high schoolers. All of this happened over three days, and by the end, by the end of the event, they had eleven new businesses signing leases for their downtown. On the bottom left is a photo from Waukesha Hachi. This is a farm-to-table event, sold maybe less than 200 people, less than 200 tickets are available. The event is managed and produced by students from the Waukesha Hachi High School Culinary Arts Program. They design the menu, they buy the produce from local farms, work with master gardeners, they also collaborate with art students and ag students to put on this event. All proceeds go back to the high school to support those programs. The Waukesha Hachi Merchants Association supports the event, as does the city, but this is really the kids' opportunity to shine. And they've been able, graduates from the Culinary Arts Program have gone on to get jobs, not only in downtown Waukesha Hachi, but across the metroplex. And they've come back, they bring those kids back annually so that they can share their experiences with the younger students. On the right is Sulfur Springs, that's their plaza. They used to have a farmer's market, Market Day, similar to what y'all have. They had, saw that there was a lot of competition with other markets in the DFW area. So they decided to turn things on their head, they moved the market to the evening, they added kid-friendly activities, you can see there's a movie screen back there, it's pretty small. But they also, beyond just adding produce, they also incorporated prepared food so that they were supporting that cottage industry, and they included local arts and crafts. But they curated the vendors that were involved in their markets as a way to attract new people. And what we heard from residents there is that they appreciated the opportunity to be able to swing by here at night, pick up their produce for the week, pick up some food that they could serve for dinner that night, have their kids have some fun on the plaza before they headed home, and it changed the dynamic. You can see from this photo, that's an incredible amount of people. They're only have a community of about 12,000, and they have regular turnout like that. And they've been able to attract vendors from farther away who were looking for, I think they hold theirs on a Wednesday evening. Now I'd like to share some examples from some different downtowns across the state. So let's start with Canyon, which is a community of just over 13,000 in the Panhandle. In only eight years, their downtown has gone through a tremendous transformation. It started when owners of a downtown building on the square, this beautiful red one up here, decided to renovate the property and open a coffee shop. Today, that company has expanded into multiple locations in Amarillo, but they're still an anchor of downtown Canyon. That really led to a lot of different actions happening quickly. The first new construction on the square since 1947, development of an additional 17,000 square feet of retail that's currently all leased, and restoration of a long vacant automotive building that's a new restaurant. So the growth of new restaurants led to the development of a downtown dining district. Over the course of eighteen months, they tracked the receipts and found that over one-third of all restaurant sales tax receipts were happening in that district. This also led to further growth in their food industry, so food suppliers, produce, different markets grew with that. And none of that would have been possible without strong partnerships between the city's EDC, Main Street, and the, and the downtown merchants. So I wanted to share this. This is from Ennis, which is just south of Dallas. A few years back, they had a horrific tornado go through their downtown, and a lot of people felt like that was probably going to be the death knell of their downtown. But today, they're stronger than ever. They went through a rebranding process, it's award-winning, and they use consistent colors and design elements, and explained where their brand story come from, so people could understand why they chose this, why they have the Blue Bonnet spirit of Texas. Garland is one of the largest cities in Texas. There were people living there that didn't even know they had a downtown. I've met people, they grew up there, that still will argue with me that they didn't have a downtown. But they do. But it was, it had some great cultural resources, but it had no life, and it had no color. Things took off quickly. They, the city and some private sector folks brought in new artists and decided on new projects that they wanted to accomplish. On the left is a paint-by-murals number that was completed over the course of a summer evening and brought a whole lot of new people to downtown. This picture on the bottom right is a sculpture garden that was created from recycled water bottles. There were people that had never gone to downtown that now it's a regular spot. They've made their mark on downtown, they've contributed to making it more colorful, they bring their kids there, they bring their friends there. It's really changed things quickly. They did an event, this is a great event, it was Downtown Dine Around. They invited a small group of food bloggers from the DFW area to come visit. There are twelve, you know, I think they have more than twelve restaurants in their downtown. They shared pictures, they met owners and heard the stories, and they reached over 23,000 people on social media for a two-hour event. Today, residents are excited about downtown Garland, and now they know they actually have a downtown, so that's even the best result. Mineral Wells, less than two years ago, we were invited to do a downtown assessment for Mineral Wells. I don't know how many y'all are familiar with Mineral Wells, but they got hit with the triple whammy in the 1970s. They lost their base, the Baker Hotel closed, and I-20 opened to the south. Things went downhill. Residents called it miserable wells. And since, in the last two years, the community has taken off. They've realized that it was, before, when we were there, there wasn't even sure that financing was going to come together for the Baker, but it did. But our assessment helped them see that all of downtown mattered, and they needed to bring life back, no matter what happened with Baker. New businesses opened, new murals popped up, and there was a new sense of pride. They stopped calling it miserable wells. One thing that's been done there is the development of the first public benefit corporation in Texas. This was approved by the legislature only in 2017. A property owner in Mineral Wells purchased the Crazy Water Hotel, which is a smaller hotel a few blocks from the Baker, and what he decided to do was create a public benefit corporation because he had so many friends and colleagues that wanted to invest in the project that he was making his CPA nervous. So we think this is a tool that could be useful to other communities by allowing local residents to invest in downtown revitalization. The city of Richmond, located west of Houston, there are about 30,000 people, recently recruited a cybersecurity company to its historic hotel building in downtown, shown there on the top. The second story had been vacant forever, it's chopped up into a series of small rooms with screen doors inside, oddly. But the lack of maintenance really threatened the buildings that are housed on the first floor. So company leaders love the idea of being located in a walkable and mixed-use environment that had charm as opposed to being in a traditional office building anywhere in Houston. They're currently renovating the building, but they've already sponsored several events, and they serve on a task force that's designed to recruit other tech companies to the area. Finally, the company is partnering with a downtown nonprofit called Mercy Goods that will work with other partners to preserve and restore the interior. Mercy Goods is a nonprofit that provides job skills and mentoring to at-risk youth. When they initially looked at their building in downtown, they were told that that use wasn't permitted, that custom furniture wasn't allowed because it was an industrial use. Thankfully, the city council saw that that was a real, that this nonprofit could bring something different to downtown, and now those kids are going to be learning skills and participating in the restoration of this building. So it's a win-win for everybody, and they make beautiful furniture. So Seguin, just around the corner, it's interesting, so the medical center there, when they're recruiting new doctors, they bring them downtown. They want them to feel connected to the community, and they want them to understand the downtown culture. Since 1996, over $45 million has been invested by public-private sources in downtown, including $14 million on a state-of-the-art public library. The Main Street program there coordinates efforts designed to encourage continued revitalization of downtown. This includes low-interest loan program, the Fix-It Facade program, access and assistance with state and federal preservation tax credits, a five-year local tax abatement on improvements, and waiver of most permit fees. The Seguin EDC and Main Street also partner to do an annual Small Business Resource Fair that is designed to provide all Seguin business owners with actionable advice and to assist them in establishing, operating, and growing their businesses. Smithville is tiny compared to y'all, but it's only been recently that there's been a significant change in investment in downtown. They were one of the first communities, they were the first community to be certified as a film-friendly community by the Texas Film Commission, and they were recognized by, as a state cultural district in 2013, which is pretty impressive for a community their size. They host a number of film crews over the years, but they also continue to build on their art scene and attract new downtown businesses, including restaurants, boutiques, a mercantile featuring Smithville-branded items, art studios, galleries, and more. All right, let's talk about best practices real quick. So first up, it's, you got to gather your supporters and get a team together that will be the cheerleaders for downtown. Your community has grown tremendously in the last decade. When I got to Texas in 2005, the population here was under 7,000, and today, you're on the verge of crossing over to the plus 50. You have some downtown business owners that are already very invested in what's happening, and they want to see things change, and they're ready to take action and make things happen. But you also have local preservation organizations, Chamber of Commerce, local churches, the school district, there's an elementary school just around the block. And get those kids involved. I'm sure that the high school students in your community would love to be asked what they think and what they'd like to see in their downtown. You want these kids to feel connected to your community so that one day they'll come back. And when kids are downtown, they're more likely to be with parents, with extended family members, or friends and neighbors, allowing you to make even more connections. So we always tell people how important it is to take a road trip. We are happy to provide contact information for other communities that you might want to visit. We suggest that you bring a group and that you make meetings with the city manager, with economic development staff, with the chamber, with small businesses, that you tour downtown, that you ask questions, and that you take a lot of notes. The great thing about downtowners is that they're willing to tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly. And sometimes it's ugly. Change isn't easy, and it also takes time. Change isn't easy, and it also takes time. Look forward, not back. Too many times, we hear, "We tried a downtown group 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, or 30 years ago. It didn't work then, and it wouldn't work now." Two of our stakeholders, business owners, city council members, this actually happened in one of our communities, haven't spoken since 1990, when they were in high school, and they won't talk now. The city tried to start a downtown program, but no one participated, cared, volunteered. The past is the past, and it's time to look ahead. So, gathering data, get your sales tax revenue for your downtown program, for your downtown businesses. Track property values and taxes paid. Compile data on public and private investments. Keep account of new downtown businesses and employees. If your downtown regularly attracts visitors for events, use volunteers to walk the crowds and get zip codes. By tracking these data points over time, then ideally, you'll have actual numbers that can be used to promote downtown as an economic engine. Make a plan of action. I would suggest you look at just doing a plan for the next year. Choose small projects. Choose low-cost, high-impact projects that can create a splash, that can create interest, and that will have people asking questions. And break down those tasks so that you can recruit people to help. Initially, your group of downtown supporters is going to be small. Finally, don't try to take on too much too fast. That burns people out, and then you don't get the results that you want to see, and then everybody just points to it as another failure. Look at incremental development in small projects to start. The picture on the left is the cell block in Clifton, downtown Clifton, west of Waco. It's a one-of-a-kind boutique hotel that was created from the old city jail. The sleeping, one holding cell was converted into a sleeping area, and the other houses the bathroom and dressing area. There's a rooftop patio with a fire pit and a view of the murals and art alley below. And they still have the actual doors, so you can actually kind of get locked in there. I unfortunately know that from personal experience. The picture in the center is Ted Kane's Used Car Lot, which is now Ted Kane's Pocket Park in downtown Rockwall. The property owner and the city partnered to turn a vacant used car lot into a pocket park and provide public restrooms, which every downtown should have, because they are absolutely an economic development tool. And if you don't believe me, watch how quickly people leave your downtown when they need to use the restroom, or their children do. The stage on the right is in Kemp, Texas, small community. When Kaufman County removed the last rail bridge, they had it moved to the downtown park. A year later, they worked with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife to install a rain harvesting system, as well as a rain garden that includes native plants. And a local artist is responsible for the mural of Stevie Ray in the back. So, ideas come from everything. And too often, great ideas are killed by overthinking, or overanalyzing, or worrying that things might not work out. Be willing to try something new, empower stakeholders to take the lead, and don't be afraid of failure. If something doesn't work, you can always tweak it, try it again. Let us know how we can help. As a nonprofit, we're here to serve our members, and we want to support Kyle as you move forward with your downtown efforts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thank you, Catherine. Really great presentation. Thank you for making time in your schedule to come and present this for us as a nonprofit organization. I'm particularly happy for us to be able to partner in that manner and have the third-party eyes, refreshing eyes, to kind of give us an idea and look at our downtown. First of all, if you wouldn't mind, would you be willing to provide us this presentation that you had?
They've got it loaded back there.
Fantastic.
I can send you the notes for it, too, if you'd like.
Fantastic. There's a lot of great ideas with this. I'm not going to hog the mic here. I'd love to hear some of the thoughts and comments of the council, but this is something, she gave us lots of different examples, a lot of examples that our city is much smaller than ours and not what a lot of the resources and opportunities that we have. I was happy to see the pros, also happy to see the cons. It's good to know these things and be aware of them. I think there's a lot of opportunity. Hopefully, before you leave, I'm not sure if you saw our downtown right now and how lit up it is with our Christmas lights and different things like that.
I was going to go do that after. I saw the depot on my way in.
Fantastic, yes, the depot looks absolutely amazing. And what's been so exciting ever since we did that, I'm sure the council knows this, we have people in our downtown square at night to see our lights. Unfortunately, we don't have any businesses open that could really participate and take advantage of that, but these are steps in the right direction, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for us. And for me, I know I'm committed, over my next three years of my term, to implementing a lot of these things. I went to the downtown meeting we had earlier this, or you all had earlier this year, Lockhart.
Yes.
And I don't know if anybody's been to Lockhart recently. I used to go there maybe about a decade ago, and no shade on Lockhart, but it wasn't particularly a downtown I wanted to be in. Now, you go there, there's a, it's thriving, it's vibrant, there's a lot going on, and you've clearly showed us a bunch of other examples across the state as well. So, it's surely a lot of opportunity.
Well, and I think it's important to understand that downtown businesses and property owners have to be, they have to be actively engaged and take on responsibility for what happens downtown also. It can't just be the city's responsibility to make things happen, and downtown property owners as well. They have to have realistic ideas about what their buildings are worth, or what they can rent for. A lot of times, we see the same issues over and over again, where somebody in a, not even in a community this size, but in a much smaller community, much farther away from any sort of more urban development, is asking a million dollars for a building that's worth $100,000 on a good day. So, that's not uncommon. But I think it also, we've seen the most successful downtowns are those where there is grassroots support, and it has to come from the bottom. The city has the opportunity to support efforts, but those folks that are already downtown also have to understand their responsibilities and be accountable for that.
Absolutely. And there was a lot of great things there, and like I said, I don't want to hog the time and amount, but it was really great that you noted a few things. I know the walkability and the crosswalks is probably particular interest to a man, Howard, back there. He's talked about that in our downtown as well. We've talked about the historical and cultural aspects of that as well. I was looking at some of your examples and your pictures of things that were retrofitted and turned to different things. I'm thinking about the old post office and other different things like that, that we have some opportunity with. So, I'll kind of back off the mic now and open it up to the rest of the council, but I really appreciate you being here, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to touch on the part that you said about attracting small business. I think that's key to a downtown, you know, bringing in initiatives to get them here and keeping them here, you know? But one of the things I've noticed here in the last couple of weeks is that our downtown is attracting, you know, a lot of walking traffic, and that's been great with our Christmas lights, but we need to find something that's going to do that on a weekly basis. And I know there's some ideas out there. I know I've got a few ideas about how to do that, and, but I do want to say that I think the small businesses are key to the growth of downtown and bringing in the right small businesses that are going to attract that walking traffic and keep them there and keep the families there. I think that's what we need to target.
Well, and I noted in the report that the master plan for Parks and Rec had included a trail system for the future, and I think that would be an excellent way to connect downtown with some of the neighborhoods that aren't immediately adjacent, and just creating those connections where people can more easily access small businesses in your downtown. I mean, that's really what sets Kyle, can set Kyle apart. Everybody has vacant land, everybody has vacant buildings, but it's the culture of the community that stands out to people that are looking for where to land.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just, I like, I like the idea of, I mean, I liked everything about your presentation, but I think it reinforces the clear focus and direction. You have to start small. It has to be very specific, and then it builds from there.
Yes.
And I think a lot of the foundation that we've come forward with, and it has to be, even though it's clear, specific, and directed, it has to be diverse in a lot of different aspects, too, right? So that you're not with the blinders on, you're looking for opportunities, right? I see things that are, could be cons that are opportunities. A lot of those cons are opportunities.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes.
If we're looking at it from a positive standpoint, not a deficit model. And I really appreciate the idea that you point those out, because clearly, some of those cons that were listed here in our own area are areas where we can capitalize on. The thing that I think really encapsulated a lot of this is the foundation that we put forward. There's a lot of foundational things that we put forward in the city that we can capitalize on. It just has to be focused in one area. The strategic plan supports everything down the line. It can't just be focused for the downtown, for a development, but then other levels of administration have plans that are looking in different directions, right? So, I think culminating into the plan and, you know, just kind of signalizing it and really focusing on supporting everything down the line really makes it a little bit more seamless. And that's incorporating other entities outside of the city government, too, that are supporting small business coming in. That plan needs to be focused within our strategic plan as well, and that's how we can gain some capacity of that. So, I know we're looking at capitalizing on opportunities for small business. Well, the largest demographic in small business owners in transition in state Texas and nationally are owned by Latino females.
Yep.
Right? So, what are we doing? And I think if we look at that, too, and we encapsulate that in our strategic plan, and you look at the demographic shifts across this region, then I think we're, if we're not striving forward into that focus, then we're losing opportunities.
Yes.
Right? So, just a food for thought when we're talking about this type of strategic planning. But thank you very much.
Thanks.
Councilor Snoyel.
Thank you so much for spending your time and explaining all of the neat things, and a lot of the things that you've said are actually things that citizens have talked to us and told us about as well. So, it was really nice to be able to reinforce their thought processes as well. So, you know, you have a lot of great ideas, and, and what I guess, what I'm trying to figure out at this point is, what's the best way to take the next step? I mean, obviously, some type of a committee, you know? At one point, when I first got on the council, you know, four or five years ago, it was all about we were going to do the Main Street program, and that was going to be rolled out immediately, and that was something that we kind of shied away from. And so, you know, while it's great to have these assessments, and I think it's very valuable information, I think that the very next thing I need to know from you is like, what would you recommend is our next step? Would it be appointing an ad hoc committee to create a downtown group? Would it be going ahead and rolling out a downtown employee to manage downtown, which is something we've talked about through Main Street? So, like, what would you say is the best way to facilitate the very next step?
I think an ad hoc committee that isn't going to be talking about things forever is a good way to go, because sometimes committees are where good ideas go to die. But I think something that had a shorter timeline and that would be identifying leaders that you already have downtown and talking to them about how, because downtown business owners, if you're going to have a successful merchants group, they need to take that up, and they have to follow through, and they have to create social media channels. And you, the city can support that by sharing their information, but downtown business owners actually have to step up and take care of that.
And that's another thing. Is it, is it valuable for us to start working on getting a downtown association? I mean, like...
I think y'all can encourage it, but I think it is going to come down to the business owners making those steps, to show their commitment to making downtown a better place. The city is great at bringing people to the community, but business owners have to get those folks through the door to ring cash registers. That can't be your responsibility.
So, would you consider putting, like, on this ad hoc committee, obviously, it would be somebody from council, but it would also need to be somebody from our downtown.
I would get somebody from the chamber who understands small businesses. I would bring in your economic development staff, because they also understand small businesses. I think that you can get a few people, maybe some of those folks that have showed up at all these meetings and have been really engaged in the process. Diana, don't kill me. I know you don't need anything else on your plate. But, you know, I think that there's, I think you have people that are really excited about the potential for downtown that would be interested in taking the lead. Is there ever going to be 100% consensus? Never. Never, ever, I'll tell you. But I think there will be, you know, you can identify some strong leaders who can take it to the next level and who hopefully, we can connect with other downtown merchant groups, so they can learn from somebody that's already been through this process.
Another thing that you mentioned was, or I see as a necessity, in our downtown, we have a lot of people who live downtown, and so I would want to ensure that we are also including people who actually live within the community to be a part of this as well, because if you can't get those citizens to buy into it as well, they, it has been our experience that it can block a lot of...
But not on your downtown merchant, a downtown merchant group wouldn't...
Well, I'm not talking about the merchant group, but what I'm talking about is this ad hoc committee.
Right.
I think that, I mean, in my perspective, and I'm trying to get your perspective.
Yeah, no, I think if you, especially, you have so many residents downtown and adjacent to downtown, that they should definitely have a voice in the process. As far as Main Street, the woman who founded Main, who is credited with bringing Main Street to Texas was one of our founders, and she recognized early on that Main Street wouldn't be able to meet all the needs of the communities across Texas. There are fewer than 90 cities in the program. So, I support the Main Street program, but I also understand why communities don't do it. First of all, Main Street manager can only be focused on downtown for the first three years you're in the program, and that can be really hard. You have, your downtown isn't large for a community your size. It feels much more like a rural community, because that's where you were just 12 or 13 years ago. But, and that can be difficult, whereas if you create either, is it a community development position, because you want somebody who's well-versed in recruiting small businesses and in supporting small businesses, as, you don't want just an event planner. Downtown people are kind of magical unicorns in that they have to have a lot of different skills and be able to work with a lot of different types of people and manage a lot of different details. So, I think you can find that person, and they could be invaluable not only for downtown, but for other neighborhoods and commercial districts in your community.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Koch.
One takeaway I had from your presentation was when you were showing us the National League of Cities slide. The top of every list for every region was Parks and Recreation.
Yes. Which a lot of times is connected to the downtown, too.
Exactly, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
So, tell me what that means when that converges with downtown? Is that just like a...
Oh, I think there's a lot of crossover, because I think that there's, in almost every city where there's a strong downtown, it's because the city departments are able to work together. No one department is able to get everything done by themselves. And Parks and Rec, obviously, located just off of the square, managed the old city hall, too, so they have a, they're stakeholders as well in the process.
I'm talking about from an actual park standpoint, though. Does that, does that make a huge difference when there is an activity center there in your downtown where people can come together?
No, I do think that there should be more diverse uses happening in your activity center, and we recommended in the report that the city support the development of, I know that from my research, that the senior group was looking at developing a new site outside of downtown, and I think that's something that would be...
He's talking about the park itself.
Oh, the park itself, so the programming of the park.
Just talking about the fact that a park exists in the downtown.
Oh, but I think there's a lot of downtowns that have plazas and squares that are actively programmed that contribute a lot to what's happening, whether it be, so in Garland, actually, they have a large center plaza. They actually demolished three buildings that were, a small strip mall that had been built, but had been changed so many times it had lost any architectural value, and it was really kind of blocked visually how the square looked, and when they opened it up, it created a lawn. They have games out there that, I was there one August, 9:00 in the morning, and there were families out there playing cornhole and other games that are set up and using the tables and chairs that are set up and left there overnight. So, I think that they also do concerts there, they do movies there, and they're actually planning on redoing a complete redevelopment of that square, because it got that kind of 1970s brick rehab, where it steps down and it's real uneven, and it's just trip hazards all the way around. But I think it can be used for programming, and I think visually, you have a, you have a beautiful square with the trees, with the building. It's definitely an asset to your downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Sheil.
Can you go to the slide about the downtown overlay?
The downtown what?
Overlay, the next, I can use the next slide for showing the downtown there.
Oh, with the zoning, yes.
Zoning, yes. I know that what we have as our downtown overlay goes to, you know, along Center Street to Rebel Road, and I remember on that Friday when you were here, you guys had made a statement about... focusing.
At first, yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit for us so that...
Yes. Part of, part with new, with new downtown programs like this, when you're really taking the plunge, we recommend that you focus on a smaller area. We were just in Grand Prairie doing an assessment. Their downtown was like 50 blocks and included a bunch of residential area. And it seemed, and they're like, hey, what are we going to do with this huge giant area? And we don't even have a dedicated staff person. So we immediately recommended that they focus on their main street. Because of the way your sidewalks are right now, because you don't have control and there's still some up in the air about when the timeline is on a bypass, if that ever is going to happen. I think that right now I would focus on the area, I would include the rail yard business because it's a successful business and it brings in a lot of people into your community. And I know people that go there and enjoy themselves, and it would be good to pull those folks up into downtown businesses. And if the owner is amenable, get them involved in what's happening in downtown. But I think you probably shouldn't go up more than probably three blocks from where we are right now. Maybe one block past the square? Probably not. I would focus on the very, on these probably six blocks at first. And then expand downtown efforts further up Center Street as, as the market kind of pushes it that way, which it will. And I think it's likely that you're probably going to see more conversion of those residential units that are up along Center Street that, I mean, we've seen this in a lot of other downtowns, they just naturally turn over into more commercial uses. Because you have, I mean, you have a huge traffic count and also they're, I'm sure, have increased in value considerably.
Right. And they're already, I guess, set to, if they, you know, change ownership, they immediately go to a, a commercial business.
Okay, yeah.
So we kind of already have that in place.
That's good.
For those, for their businesses, or for their homes that aren't already businesses. But...
And I know there's, there are some smaller ones already that are there too, from, from when I've driven around, yeah.
I just want to say, when you, when you're talking about that, just so we're all, maybe just me understand that, you're talking about investing resources of the city into that particular area.
Well, I think it's, it's staff time. It's programming. I mean, there's not a lot you can do about Center Street itself right now and sidewalks until you gain control over it. So I think it's focusing on either side of them. Is that adding the colorful crosswalks on those side streets that are off of Center Street? Does Tech dot com and check everything daily? No. And I certainly won't tell them if you put them there without permission. But I think that sometimes it's good to be a rubber.
I'll just say that a representative from Tech dot is here in the room tonight.
Oh. I'm as red as that red. We'll talk later, Tech dot. But I do, I think it is more staff time and programming. I don't know that it's going to take actual city funding to make things happen. Do you need to bring in, you know, would it be helpful for there to be maybe some small business workshops like what Mesquite is doing? I think that's something that a lot of people in central Texas are very involved in and excited about. And if they're given the opportunity to get information about how to be entrepreneur and what resources already exist out there without the city doing anything, that that could be valuable.
Okay. But if a, you know, company does go into, or a business does want to take over a home further down, we don't discourage that.
I mean, and I know y'all don't really, you do 380 agreements. I don't know if you would consider for small businesses, is there an opportunity to change up your permitting schedule to support those small businesses? Beauty EDC had a small business permit discount where if you were a small business and you weren't eligible for their larger incentive program, that you could get a discount on permit fees, which even little things like that can make a difference and wouldn't make a huge hit in city revenue. And that's something that other communities are doing in the region. And that's something to look at, is to look at what other communities are doing right around you. Because if other communities are making it easier for people to open a business, then they're going to go to other communities. And you don't want to lose those opportunities.
Amen.
Amen. Any other questions? Thank you, Catherine, very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night and happy new year.
Thank you. All right. I've been informed that our special guest is here, so I'm going to bring back up Agenda Item Number Two: Recognition of the Parks Department for City Square Lighting. Cusper, Coach.
This is my item. I know that the rest of the council will want to say something on this, but Parks and Rec, thank you for your patience. Sometimes we are on Santa's time and not our own time, so he got here as quick as he could. But he has a proclamation...
Santa!
...that he will read on behalf of a council, and I feel the citizens of Kyle. Come up here, Santa, right up to the front, please. And then afterwards, I'd like us to, to take a picture with you all because we really do appreciate all the hard work that you put into City Square Park this holiday.
Can you hold it, Jennifer?
I think I can hold all this. All right. To Miriam, Chance, Tam, and crew, I, Santa Claus, would like to thank you. You strung the lights fast in only two weeks. We watched you toil and work hard with very little sleep. It reminded me of my elves in Santa's workshop who worked, worked, worked all around the clock. Thank you, Parks and Rec, for listening to the call. This project was never about those naughty list council members at all. It's about smiles and laughs from kids, young and old. It's about Kyle families enjoying the holidays with a, with a loved one to hold. The park's beauty is breathtaking. Every time we see it, the council says, "Thank you," and I assure you, they mean it. Thank you for the decorations, for decorating a beautiful downtown. I can't wait to see next year. It will be twice as grand, I hear. Love, Santa.
You're, you're going to be recruited up here for a photo, folks. Sorry about that. Parks and Rec.
Can we say some stuff first? Can we say words to them first?
Can we just take this, please, to Santa, up to him?
You're welcome. Good job. And the crew, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Great job, great job.
Cusper, Coach, you want to, or are you finished with your comments for now?
I'll let, I'll let it to the council.
Cusper, Rizzo.
First of all, I just want to thank the Parks Department. What an amazing job, guys. When I came out here that day, y'all were working hard. Man, y'all were just going at it. Y'all, y'all looked like worker ants up there. I mean, y'all were just in unisonce going, and y'all did an amazing job. I just want to say you've given your town a sense of pride, your community a sense of pride. When I was in the square and we lit up the tree, people were just happy about it. I, I don't know, I don't know if you understand how much you've done for the city. It's given the residents of Kyle something to brag about. So I just want to say thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Cusper, Ellison.
Yeah, I concur with everything Councilmember Rizzo has said. There is a lot of sense of pride. I've gone out to this square, I don't know how many nights now, and had various conversations with Kyle residents that couldn't be happier that their square looks like this. I've talked to couples that are happy they don't have to go down to, to other cities and take a stroll with the lights. I've talked to families that are happy they don't have to go to San Marcos and deal with the college students and are happy that they can do something in their community. And I can't tell y'all how proud I am. I went out there and watched you all work during the day. The things y'all did in two weeks, in less than two weeks, because you had a Thanksgiving holiday in there. I am beyond impressed with you all. And I know there were other departments as well that helped out, and I want to give them a shout out as well because I know there were some other hands that helped. But you all were phenomenal. You dropped everything and you, you ran with this. I, I saw even you all got some help from some folks that are incarcerated at our prison that came and helped and raked leaves and various different things. We are so proud of you all. Mariana, thank you so much for coming in. You, you have knocked it out of the park with this. You and your staff, you, you took the challenge. I know when you first came up here, it was like our, our first meeting, meeting you, and we, we put this on you. And I know the mayor said some big ambitious things and some other things like that, but you all came to task. And I am so proud of this group of folks you all have and anyone else that is not here. I hope y'all encourage them to watch this video. We can't thank you all enough. This is what we are proud of. We had a mention earlier about how great our staff is. This is another great example of this. And I can't tell y'all how proud I am seeing our community enjoying our square and doing things like that. Major kudos.
Cusper, Snowy.
So it's no secret that we have started our family over again by fostering. And so, you know, our olds, our old children are 23 and 18, so we haven't gone to the square as often as most people do because, well, our children are older and, you know, we've been, no, you know, we just kind of do our own thing. So this year, we had, we call them the Duke and the Duchess because we're not allowed to say their names publicly. And so I took them down to City Hall. And I want you to know that this is the first Christmas that they've seen a Christmas tree. And this was the first Christmas that they got to sit on Santa's lamp. And what a treat. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but what a treat for me to be able to take these two children to this beautiful park, to see these beautiful lights, to see Santa, to receive the little treats that they got from Santa, and to know that this was all available within my little city. So I just want to say heartfelt thank you for making my Duke and Duchess's first Christmas in Kyle perfect. So thank you.
Cusper, Sheila.
Again, you know, I can't expand too much on what the other council members have said except for thank you, thank you, thank you. I know Lucy even had a good time. And for those who don't know, she's my doxxed. But she also enjoyed herself. But also, I do want to put out a wonderful shout out for all the choirs. The, the children singing was just, took the lights to a whole nother level, and they were beautiful. And also, if anybody hasn't seen it, the tree in front of Public Works, I don't know if you guys helped with that? If you did, oh, well, kudos to them too, because that's a cool looking tree. I do want to put that out there, but you know, you guys did an absolutely fabulous job. You have made coming to downtown at night a beautiful thing for families to take pictures with, and it's, it's been great. So thank you so, so very much.
Anyone else?
I mean, they've taken it all out. I mean, you know, I have two young ones at home and, and they, 14 and 16, and the things they talk about is, let's go to the park. Let's go downtown to go, take those lights and take some pictures, tons and tons of pictures. So when you have that kind of engagement and you become a, a model for the rest of the city too, people follow. So you're looking, you're seeing beautiful lights all over the place. And we couldn't have asked for more. You know, our, our beautiful town is, is engaged and has really seen something that, from all of us, is just really trying to figure out a way to, to set a, a standard. And you guys have, have really exuded that standard tremendously. And we thank you for your creativity and your example of, of a gold standard for the city. So thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I heard a pretty funny story from, it may have been Benito or one of the other employees sitting next to me before Santa and I went out. And they, it was essentially showing me the, the little, you know, losing fingerprints from putting up all the lights and the, there was war stories of kind of the joints hurting a little bit from all the extra time. And then mixed in with that was ear to ear grins. And that's, that's, that's the culture we're after right there. High expectations, high quality, high joy. And, and so way to, way to model that for us. It's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Cusper, Coach.
They've all said all they need to say. You guys set a new bar, but just know that it's going to go up again next year. All right? We're not done.
But you'll have more than two weeks.
We're not done. You'll have more than two weeks. You guys were amazing. Couldn't ask for more this year. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you.
I, I heard you bought all the lights in the, in every, every place that they were for sale, basically just bought them all out. So that's pretty, it was that chance that bought them all out. Good job.
Shop over first, yeah.
Shop over first, yeah. There you go. All right. Thank you. All right. Y'all ready to do some business? All right, next up, CIP Road Projects Update.
What a hard act to follow. Good evening, Mayor and Council Leon Barba City Engineer. I'm here to give you an update on our CIP projects. Lehman Road Project, the numbers haven't been updated on our percentage of completion. We don't have a current pay estimate at this time, so we should get that early next year. As you may have noticed, we've already paved from Primrose all the way back to 150 on that section. It's still closed, there's still some work in the area. And we believe that they're going to be opening up that road later this month. So we're still working on that and trying to do some cleanup on the area too. Again, we're expecting to complete that project in August of 2020. Burleson Street made the news today, as you may have noticed. This particular picture is showing where we have the gas line that was broken, four inch gas main, which is a significant line. We, the, the road is open though from Senator Rodriguez for local traffic only. And there's still some work in the church that the detention pond is still cleaning up. And we're still working on with the utility crews from Live Oak to south of James Atkins. Of course, Rodriguez and Spring Ranch are still closed, and there's still some utility work going on in there. You may have noticed today that Unit Pacific is there at the site working. You'll actually, in this picture, you'll see actually two stands there for the bars that are being placed. The extra ones are going to be longer so they can reach across that intersection as we widen it. Their traffic's still closed up there at James Atkins, so they're using Burleson from Center to Star of Texas. We still have folks working in the area, so we're asking folks to kind of be patient with those workers and try to be reminded that they're in the area, so watch out for those workers. Estimated completion is June of 2020. Kyle Crossing is pretty much completed. PW still needs to work with us on getting a few signs replaced in there, but that project is substantially completed. It's being used and buttons are down. Everything's ready in place. So I think all that's left is a paperwork to close the project out. Mutton Creek Interceptor, we have one item remaining on that project. We need to do some erosion control. That's, that particular manhole was, was washed out pretty badly there during some of our recent rains. So we're going to have to do a change order to add some more rip wrap around that particular manhole to protect it. Again, just a reminder, this project is 40% grant funded, and we are asking for an extension from them. this project is 40% grant funded, and we are asking for an extension from them, which we expect they will approve pretty quickly. Waste water treatment expansion project, we were planning to bring that back to council today for review and approval, but our finance director is asking for some extra time to be able to prepare a proper funding plan for that particular project. Sense of estimate that we came up with was kind of very low compared to what the actual bids came in. So, we'll hopefully bring that back to you next year, January 21, council meeting. Plum Creek Waste Water Improvements, we are still working to try to meet that deadline to get it fully completed by the end of, before the end of the holidays. And we do have a final walkthrough we'll have scheduled for January, so we'll have a punch list prepared for that. And we will be removing that construction entrance that's there at Western Cove that Councilmember Villalobos asked us about. Marketplace Avenue Extension, we're done. That's it. We're finished with that project. So, the light is active. Wanted to mention something about the consent agenda item number nine. That is the professional services agreement that we have with LJA. They're ready to get started on that project. From what I understand, they may even be out there surveying tomorrow. So, this is a project that's very fast paced. We have to get it completed within the two-year timeframe that was given to us by the General Land Office. And this amendment will approve their contract with the city. Any questions?
Thank you, Leon. Any questions? Councilor Tenorio.
Actually, it's not really a question. I think it's a statement. We missed the boat. We should have asked Santa for this as a special Christmas.
The wastewater treatment plant?
All of it. So, I think we missed the boat.
Anyone else? Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, appointments. Consider appointment to CAPCOG General Assembly to replace the mayor. I'm currently serving on the General Assembly of CAPCOG. Wanted to make that seat available. It's a couple lunches a year. We just made Councilmember Rizzo one of the members to replace former Councilmember Araby. And I'm capable of going to those lunches, but if there's somebody else who would like to volunteer to be on that assembly, I'd be happy to give them that seat. Councilor Sheil.
I would like to volunteer, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Other thoughts?
Do we need a motion?
Sure.
Motion to nominate Councilmember Sheil to be the CAPCOG General Assembly to replace Mayor Mitchell.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilwoman Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. All right. Next up, consent agenda. Is there any items that anyone wants to pull or motions to make?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Tenorio.
I'd like to pull item number 10.
Okay.
With that, I'd also like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, and 11.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Sheil that we approve consent agenda items number eight, nine, and 11. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, yes, sir.
If you just try to raise your hand if you do not need item number 11, you just come in for a camera. So, I apologize if that came to last.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to rescind my motion.
Okay. Can we restate?
I'd like to restate the motion to approve consent agenda items number eight, nine.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilwoman Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Sheil that we approve agenda items number eight and nine. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 10. Authorize the city manager to execute a three-year license and service agreement with ESRI Redlands, California in amount not to exceed $15,000 per year, or $45,000 for three-year contract term to license ARCGIS software for use by the city's planning and development department. This is Mr. Coons's item, but Councilor Tenorio has the floor.
Just a quick clarification. Will this new software make sure that we are completely in line with the new legislative rules that were passed this last session?
I'm going to look back to Steve Clamens, our GIS coordinator for that one.
Steve Clamens, I'm the GIS coordinator with the Community Development Department. I'm not sure what rules you're referring to.
Would Howard be able to answer that question, or is this, as you know, the legislation, legislative session implemented new regulations for our planning and zoning departments to go through. We now have a very limited amount of time to get our, our, our zonings done. I want to assure, does this software make sure that the timeframes are taken care of, that everything's going to be properly followed by the law with this particular product? Because of the new laws, I want to make sure that the software that we're investing in is able to do, to protect the city.
This is not directly related to that.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
My apologies. I was talking. My name's Howard Coons. I'm the Community Development Director. I don't believe that utilizing this software necessarily intersects the state laws from earlier this year. We do utilize software in the course of plating properties, but I don't think it would necessarily help nor hinder the process. This is just upgrading stuff that is currently three years out of date.
Okay. I just wondered if there is a software system that was being rolled out now with the new?
No.
Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out, was if this was going to help us stay on track with the new laws. Okay.
It will not hurt us.
Okay.
But that's not the purpose of why we're bringing it on.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Quick question on that. Just want for a point of clarification. I think this is, this is great. I know I've had conversations with you, Stephen, in the past. Would this cover all, as many parties as we needed to on the staff in order to utilize this licensing agreement? So, I know we're getting an additional GIS position as well.
It's basically unlimited use for the Community Development Department, but within the scope of the software that they provide will allow for online viewing, unlimited. So, once this is in place, then I can set up viewers for the general public and other staff to, to much better communicate all these data items and the GIs that we have.
Gotcha. So, I guess, and I appreciate that. So, essentially, I just want to make sure that this is the most effective agreement and contract we could do in order to, as our city grows and as our department grows, for everyone to have access to what we need to do.
It's a really amazing offer, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization, to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year user license and service agreement with ESRI Redlands, California in the amount not to exceed $15,000 per year or $45,000 for the next three-year contract term for user licenses to ARCGIS software for use by the city's planning and community development department.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, considering possible action. Direct staff to bring back design firms for veterans memorial. This is sponsored by our Veterans Memorial Committee. Councilmembers Ellison, Villalobos, Rizzo, any of y'all can take it. Councilwoman Ellison, I think you, the one that mentioned it to me, you want to say anything or?
Sure. So, not, not a whole lot to talk about because we're still looking at various options. So, just to give a little feedback and as a public notice as well, the council made it very clear that actually, building a veterans memorial was of, up the utmost importance to this council. I think anytime we put three council members on an ad hoc committee, I think that's clearly us stating that we want to get something accomplished with that. We did the same thing with the PD facility. And this is something that we, we really want to get done. We are looking at, for anyone that doesn't know, over by the PAC Center, there's the pond on the, on 1626 and Kohler's. We're looking to build a veterans memorial around the entirety of that. There, in the past, there have been $10,000 set aside to get this accomplished, and for one reason or another, it never happened. But we are looking to really knock it out of the park with this veterans memorial. I think we are, it's going to be nowhere near $10,000 what we want to, want to make happen with this. I don't want to get too into weeds on a lot of things because we do have a number of different angles that we're looking at on this. But I think that one of the next steps that we need to take, and we've talked about as an ad hoc committee, that we need to get a strategic and design firm to work with our uptown development MoMark in order to get a design and rendering accomplished. So, we can then utilize that rendering to find different ways to get the funding for this. I think we all have expressed a desire to get this veterans memorial dirt turned, and things happen on this in the very near future. It is going to take some time to get the funding and get where we need to get on that. But I think that's kind of more or less what we want to do, is kind of get that ball rolling on, on getting that firm in order to work with MoMark Development and Steven Spears, the lead designer in the uptown development on this. Councilmember Villalobos, Councilmember Rizzo, did I miss anything?
No, I think you, you addressed it appropriately. One of the things I do want to just really emphasize on is the timeline. This has been a project that's been going on for a long time. I'm glad to see the council's full support and three council members on the ad hoc committee that are, are really excited about this project and want to see it come, dirt turning, as Councilmember Ellison said. I want to see this project come to fruition really quickly. And one reason is that our veterans have been waiting a long time, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from them. And I think they're, they're at the point where they're like, this might not happen. I'm going to reassure them that this project is going to happen, and we, I think we've got the council's going to make it happen. I think this is a great way to bring some more pride to our community. And that's something I can't stress enough, is bringing pride to this town. And our Christmas lights showed that. I think the veterans memorial show that. And I think we're on the right track to revitalize a sense of pride in our community.
I want to add one more thing. So, we did have a meeting with Steven Spears, and, and we had a conversation. He was generous enough to come up with a pre-development schedule. And it's one of, some of the, he kind of outlined, and we'd love to share this with the rest of the council as well, but he kind of outlined where we need to be each month in order to meet kind of our, our very ambitious timeline. So, he did mention three things that we, he would kind of put forward as far as where we would need to be in January and through, throughout the next set of years. I don't know if this would be a good time to talk about those or if we want to mention those. So, he did.
Just if you're comfortable with the direction, you know, it might be worth waiting a little bit to solidify the plan a little more with the various elements that are at play.
Gotcha.
It's up to you.
Yeah. I, I think that's probably best. But I guess, to the council and to the public, just let you all know that this ad hoc committee is also working very feverishly on this, and we, we are starting to put together a pretty solid plan. And there's going to be a lot of things that still need to happen. There's going to be a lot of hands on deck that would need to be hap, that would need to happen. But we're, we're looking to be ambitious about this.
Councilor Sheil.
You were speaking about timelines. When did you want staff to bring back some different design firms?
So, and I don't want to speak out of turn with the other ad hoc committee members, but I, I think that we want to get something in line with one of our January meetings, if we could. I'm looking at Scott to see if that's, that's plausible.
I think assuming the current course that we're on, with the current conversations, that that is absolutely feasible. If that falls through between now and then, we'll, we'll bring that back for further conversation in January.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Villalobos.
Yeah. It really is an honor to be working on this, but the, the, I think we got to drive home and that people understand what we're pushing for is that we're really, we're really asking for quite a bit. And I think that we are going to be very deliberate and very focused on what our expectations are for a project like this, because it's going to open up the, it's going to be the doorway to what's going to really change Kyle tremendously, right? It's that, we're talking about that, that development in that particular area that really puts Kyle on the map. And you're talking about supporting return, return visitors business and, and people that, within our local community, to be something to be proud of. So, it's a great position to be in, to have 100% support from the, from the council, and to be very, very selective in how we get to that point. Because we know that we could never do enough to show our gratitude for those people that have paid the ultimate price, but then also to respect those that are still here with us, but then also to allow that to be an opportunity for education and remembrance. So, I would just like for the public to know that that's, in every decision that we make, that is what we're looking forward to. That is what we are basing our decisions on, and that's why we are being very selective about how we get this accomplished. But at the same time, with the fervor and the focus to, to get it done, to accomplish it. So, I appreciate the discussion and look forward to moving, moving forward with it.
Councilor Tenorio.
Okay. So, I just have a quick question in regards to the selection process. One of the things that I want to know is, if there was no select date, that you want this back? If we're, if we're doing an aggressive timeline, I would think that that would need to be done pretty quickly. Another thing that I wanted to talk about was, obviously, we won't get an idea of how much it's going to cost until we see an actual design. But I'd also like to see the progress put onto our, our new spreadsheet as well, our smart sheet, so that we can keep tabs of this as well. And I think the three people who volunteered to serve on this committee, I know the additional work that's, that's coming in, and I, I appreciate everything you're doing. And now you do have our support. Thank you.
Anything else? I'm looking forward to having conversations about this down the road. It's going to be fun. And I concur with Councilmember Tenorio. It's a ton of work to get something like this off the ground. It's not a lot of work to talk about a need. It's a whole lot of work to deliver. And y'all are all three very clearly committed to this, and it's fantastic. So, all right. I'm going to move on. Next up, agenda item number 13, second reading. Approval, proven ordinance, amending the city's parking ordinance number 955 to adopt parking regulations to make violations of the parking ordinance a civil offense, establishing, establishing a civil penalty, et cetera. And subtenance to direct the city manager to issue refund checks for associated improperly assessed fines. This item is Councilmember Coaches. We voted on it last time, and if you've got anything you want to add to it, obviously, some explanation on the bullet would be helpful.
Okay. So, quickly, in August of 2017, the city of Kyle passed a parking ordinance. The reason for passing this parking ordinance is because our parking citations, the fee schedule defaulted to state statute. And so, in order to lower the fines of a typical parking ticket, we had to create a parking ordinance and bring it under the umbrella of the city. We did that in August of 2017, and in checking into it recently, discovered that it was not being implemented over the past two years. It was an oversight by our city staff. And so, what we are doing here is correcting that oversight and refunding those who were improperly fined during that time, and refunding the difference to them. And that's basically what's happening.
Okay. Any additional comments?
I just, I have to say thank you to Councilmember Coach for just sticking to it and staying focused on it and looking out for the citizens for, for those fees. I mean, some of those fees were fairly significant. And I'm just, I'm just happy that you stuck forward with it. You, you stuck, you stuck to your, your principle and making sure that this was, this was driven down to what we are trying to accomplish today and that we are, we are providing some certain level of relief to some of the people that were, were fined inappropriately. So, thank you.
Yeah. I might, I might actually like to, to add that there is no question that it was, that it was a, an oversight on the part of staff, but there's a lot of.
on the part of staff, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of understanding and sympathy from me as our city has grown from 5,000 to 50,000. Ordinances have become more complex and challenges with state law and understanding what we can and cannot accomplish are certainly reasonable and understandable. The expectation that we have and are trying to set those standards that we are talking about almost on a meeting by meeting basis for what we want to deliver to the residents is not going to change however. And so this is a fantastic demonstration by Councilmember Coach and this body of showing the community that we mean what we say, that we're going to set the mark, that we're going to do the work, that we're going to have high expectations of our staff, that we're going to own our mistakes, and that we're going to deliver top notch service to the residents. And I believe that every single person involved in this at a staff level has owned it, has stepped forward, has demonstrated that they are willing to do what is necessary to correct the mistakes, learn from them and make sure that they don't happen again. And it's honestly been a process, as I've watched this unfold over the last few weeks, that has actually endeared me to our staff and those that are affected, have been affected by this. And so in that sense, I'm proud of you. We know this is somewhat painful. It's painful for us to admit that this has happened, but at the same time, we're trying with all of our might to demonstrate a consistent commitment to holding ourselves accountable and meeting a high standard of service to the residents. So that's all I'll say on that. Councilor Tenorio.
I just wanted to say that when this whole ordinance was passed in 2017, it was meant to do good. And, you know, we were hoping to solve the issues that we were having with parking concerns and everyone who was on that council did it for the benefit. Obviously, we assume that everything's going to move forward the way we lay it out. You know, and it's a glitch. And I'm grateful that our Councilmember Koch brought it and I'm also grateful that he was able to work with our city manager and our attorney to make sure that it's not only corrected, but it is rectified and that we will have assurances that it will no longer happen again. And I think that having citizens be able to trust their government, this is one way that we can show that, you know, we're really working together to make sure that we're quantifying our mistakes and we own them. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the city's parking ordinance number 955 to adopt parking regulations to make violations of the parking ordinance a civil offense, establishing a civil penalty, establishing hearing procedures, and providing for related matters.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 14, consider impossible action to direct staff to install right turn only signage at the intersection of Doorman and FM 1626. This is my item. It is the most often complained about intersection in our city at this point. There were some others that used to be there and they've since been rectified. It's, I get it all the time. It's very dangerous, that intersection of Doorman and 1626. So you have other intersections you think are going to work?
I don't know. So what we have is a situation where the traffic light that is warranted, that is on the schedule, that is approved from TaxDOT is potentially going to take a few more years. I don't know, maybe next year. It's hard to say, but until that time, I think with the, you know, the new police facility, the training facility that's across that street, the amount of people trying to turn left during rush hour, you have to just close your eyes and gun it. And that's not acceptable to me. And I think we need to at least, at the very least, have a conversation about what we can do to fix it. So, go for it.
Mayor Council, good evening. Scott Sellers for the record, city manager. You're correct, mayor, that is a very dangerous intersection. We have been discussing this intersection for a couple of years minimum, providing updates to the council and the public as we have received them from TaxDOT. I did reach out to Michelle Romich Chambers, who is our local TaxDOT representative, who is here this evening, and asked if she could come and present a quick update to the council on the signal and of course, some sort of a ride in, ride out at this intersection.
Awesome. Fantastic.
Good evening. Yes, I do inspect 150 every day.
I knew that was coming.
On the way to work and on the way back from work. And sometimes more on the weekends because I am a resident of Kyle too. I'm very familiar with the intersection of Doorman and 1626. I used to use it quite a bit as well. We have, the signal design is complete. We're kind of in the review process and that's almost complete as well. So we expect construction to begin probably in August of 2020. If the city of Kyle wants to limit right in, right out, that's something TaxDOT can consider. And we're willing to work with y'all to do that, but we would ask that y'all would reach out to those business owners and property owners and kind of do diligence with them and make sure that they're up for that challenge.
Okay. Have you been around that intersection during rush hour?
Yes, I have. I have.
What are your thoughts about whether or not you believe that something should be done in a six months timeframe, six to seven months? What's your recommendation?
I think it definitely needs something to be done. That's why the signal's been warranted and that's why we're going to build the signal. I don't want to say, don't do anything until the signal's done because as soon as I say that and something happens, then that's bad for all of us. So if that's how the city wants to proceed, you know, TaxDOT's willing to work with you. We can help make the intersection so that it's no longer accessible from making right, left turns, going either in or out of Doorman. But we need some help with the PIO efforts if y'all are willing to do that because you have all those apartment complexes. You have Plum Creek that uses that area. You have Chevron, all those local businesses, and I think they may have some concerns.
What do y'all think?
Mayor, at times, TaxDOT in advance of a four-way signal will put stop signs up and advance warning signs for those stop signs just to get traffic comfortable with a future impending signal. So-
Well, you want to put stop signs on 1626?
That could be something, as the signals would stop vehicles also on 1626, the advance warning signs help get the traffic used to stopping there.
Okay. I don't think I'm with that. But I'm saying, don't turn left from Doorman onto 1626 in particular. I'm not saying put a stop sign on 1626.
So I think, let's talk to the businesses, let's see if they're amenable to that and see if we could do that. And just keep in mind, this is a safety concern. We're looking out for the residents. That's what our jobs up here are for, so sometimes we'll have to make those hard decisions. So let's-
I'm primarily saying no left turn out of Doorman onto 1626. Can, help me understand why the business communities that live there would be the primary ones? I mean, definitely having conversations with them, but how does that necessarily hurt them?
Because you're going to be affecting their access. So they've got a certain of access, a certain access that's already been granted by that road being there. And it's the city of Kyle's road. Doorman is your road. You own it. But once you take that away, then they may say, hey, city of Kyle, you've affected my business. I'm now losing money. Those are some of the concerns they may bring up to you. And so that's something the city's got to be willing to say, you know, we understand your concerns, but this is a safety concern and we're going to do it.
Well, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking about if you're turning from Doorman left onto 1626, there are no businesses in that area that you'd be inhibited from going to other than ACC. And if you're trying to, if someone's trying to turn left, they can just as easily turn left on Cromwell, go up, turn right, and then left again without having to make that dangerous jump.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just telling you that, I'm explaining the experiences we've had in the past with some restricting access.
All right. Councilor Tenorio.
So, as the mother of an 18-year-old who drives that way to go to school every day and has been run off the road a couple of times by people turning off of Doorman, I'm quite happy to support this. And so, but I do agree that we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we are investing or discussing this with our stakeholders. So this intersection impacts way more than just the businesses. This intersection impacts everybody who drives on that road.
I guess that's why, sorry, I'm not trying to stop you. I feel like I have interacted with the stakeholders that make that turn a ton and it's not the business owners, it's the folks that make the turn.
But I think that we need to make sure that we're having the conversations with everybody. I mean, I am totally in support of this, so please don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is that everybody, I think that ruling it out and discussing it with people is always a good option to make sure that we get that buy-in so that we're not hit later on with, well, you didn't talk to me about this. So it's just a courtesy to our citizens.
Okay. Well, if that's what the council wants to do as far as postponing the item, then until we have a time to talk to, I guess, the daycare that's right there and the gas station owners or whatever, I'm willing to do that, but I will put it on the next agenda and I'll go talk to them.
No, I would suggest that we direct staff to go ahead and start those conversations. And then that way, that's when it comes back, those conversations have already been had and they've been contacted by staff. And that would be my recommendation.
Councilmember Ellison. Sorry.
I kind of liken this to coming out of HEB and only being able to turn left onto 1626, right out of HEB. But the one thing that I am concerned about is if everybody, if you turn right onto 1626, people are going to go to the immediate left turn lane and do a U-turn. And I just want to first of all, make sure that that is not a no U-turn and that, you know, people making U-turns there will also create a safety hazard, you know, from everybody doing U-turns at that spot. That is, you know, a concern.
I think that's the point that you bring up is the idea that one change has sequential trigger effect along that roadway that does and could restrict access to businesses. And I think that's what your due diligence is, that piece alone.
Yes.
So.
The median is divided. The first opening for a protected U-turn would be beyond the bridge at a dedicated U-turn area. So I think that would be a safe.
Okay. All right.
And I would assume that over time, even if they do it at first because they don't realize it's a right turn only, they would start turning left on a Cromwell, if they want to turn left. They'll turn left on the Cromwell and then it's an easy right, you know, to a signal to turn. I mean, certainly there's a lot of traffic that goes out of there, so it will impact traffic up at that intersection as well. I mean, there's no way to get around it. It needs a light and that light is coming, so, and thank you for that.
So do you still want the light if you're going to change the intersection? That's one question that I had.
Yes, very much.
Oh, yeah.
What we're kind of saying, the reason I'm bringing it forward is between now and then, I feel like that that left turn is so dangerous that we're getting to a point where we want to do something as a very temporary means, but harkening the day that the light will come.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess I'm in the camp of, I agree. I think if we're, you're only talking about going northbound on Doorman, making a left to go westbound on 1626. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about coming off of 1626, turning south onto Doorman, that would impact those businesses. That's the difference we're talking about. So for me, sure, we can spend the next two weeks talking to some folks, but I don't think much is going to change. So we can wait that if we want, but I'd be willing to vote now to do it personally.
I use this intersection all the time. My family uses this intersection and they already have adjusted their traffic pattern to head towards Kohler's Crossing when they want to go north on 1626. They drive up Cromwell, turn right onto Kohler's and then left up 1626. So they've already adjusted that pattern to avoid that intersection when wanting to turn left.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Would this be a raised median pork chop, basically, forcing the ride in, ride out? Or would this be some sort of a temporary barricade and signage restricting the left?
Signage.
Okay.
But it would need to be with some flags and some stuff like, you know-
Type three.
Demonstrating that it's temporary and also demonstrating that they need to be able to see it, not something that blends in, in other words. It's my thought on it.
This is from both directions from the-
ACC side as well.
Yeah.
How quickly can that be done?
If it's just like a type three barrier, we can get that very quickly.
What do you, can you explain what a type three barrier is?
Basically with two legs at the base, you know, it's basically a two-leg sign with your-
Gotcha.
Are you proposing to place the type three barriers on 1626?
We would just put them on Doorman and on the ACC driveway.
Okay. I still have a lot of concerns if I don't talk to the business owners before you do this. TaxDOT as a rule would have to go do that to talk to the business owners before you restrict that access. Because you may not realize the impact you're having and if you work with the business owners, you can kind of lessen some of that impact. And what you may find out is after you do this, the business owners are going to be, some of them may be very upset. They may sue you saying you've caused them to lose business that they would have had otherwise. So those are some impacts you need to think about. I understand your concern about safety, but having those conversations is very important. So I would ask you to please reconsider without, moving forward without having those conversations.
I have no problem bringing this forward at the next council meeting if we need to take those two weeks. Either way.
Well, I defer to TaxDOT. So I'd like to make a motion to give staff direction to engage the business community located at the intersection of 1626 and Doorman on the agenda item that will be placed to create right turn onlys at that intersection.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Shiel.
Just make sure that they're bringing it back at the next council meeting.
It'll be back.
All right.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next up, agenda item number 15, direct staff to engage in a no-cost synergy performance audit by Honeywell. This is sponsored by Councilmember Villalobos.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Bringing forward just the opportunity to do an assessment in the areas of lighting, environmental controls, and water metering. And I know that there's some various different areas where there's opportunities for cost savings. And I know that the, bringing them forward is to discuss the assessment and how the assessment would take place. I know that we've had conversations on the type of assessment across the board. The council is really driven on critical data, data that's actual data that we can actually see and utilize in not only projecting, but making decisions based on that critical data that comes out of an assessment like this. I just want to make sure that we say that forward so that when you start looking and talking about assessments is that when we see something, we definitely are data-driven here on this council. And I believe that would be probably the best way of presenting an assessment for us.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Steve Smalley. I'd like to introduce my team with me tonight. We have Luis Montez, who's a business consultant with us, and I've got Deborah Roberts, who is our team leader. So before, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, okay? Try to get through this in 10 minutes. But before I start this, as a former public official myself, who served on a school board for 10 years and saw and had to live with the growth that you're managing, so I'll bring some of that experience to this table. But what I've witnessed here this evening is pretty special. And I've seen collaboration between every council member. You have a vision on what you want to do for the city. And I'm not a taxpayer here, but if I was, I could tell you that the taxpayers here are in good hands. So let's just start there.
We're officially buttered up, thank you.
All right, so this is some data that I've been able to share with Councilmember Villalobos and the city manager Sellers. My counterpart has had meetings with Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Villalobos. So in the spirit of transparency, I want to bring this data to the rest of the council. So the way the process starts with Honeywell and what we really try to do is I want you to focus on that bullseye, okay? And then that bullseye says value. And so what we try to do as a company globally is to bring the best value that we can to the city of Kyle. So looking at the data, listening to, having conversations- So looking at the data, listening to, having conversations, looking at things that you're looking at, there's some external pressures for the city. There are some internal challenges, the city. And there's a couple of business objectives at least have been highlighted, what I've seen and read and heard, that kind of highlight why we're here this evening. So from an external pressure standpoint, you've got cybersecurity threats. I won't stop there just for a second. Ninety days ago, you had 23 cities in the city, in the state of Texas that were hit by ransomware, one of which is the city we're working in, working with, and they shut down their wastewater treatment plant for 48 hours. So one of the things we want to focus on, we're not IT, but we are OT. And OT is operational technology. And so what we want to make sure when we look under this hood is that you have the right firewalls in place and you have the right technologies in place so that you don't get hit. So that's just one of the external pressures. The other thing is 700% growth in 15 years. That's phenomenal. And the data that I'm seeing is that that's going to continue another 700%. So how do you keep your first responders adequately staffed? You've got changing demographics and the needs of those people are going to need other things. And so what are you going to look at to help the needs of that changing demographic? Number two is business objectives. Increased water capacity as your city grows. And this bullet I got was grow the city, but not the cost of the city. That's pretty key, and that's one reason why we're here. Customers, internal challenges. We know about some water leak issues that have cost you some money. We want to look at integration to improve the city services. And as you grow, it will allow you to have analytic data to help you make decisions as you grow as a city. Doing more with less. You do have some aging infrastructure issues and effective use of tax dollars. So how do Honeywell play? Well, first off, what we're here to do tonight is to ask permission to do a facility assessment. We've done one. We did it 18 months ago, but it was very small in scope. So listening and learning and watching what you're doing, we want to expand that into lights, gas, water issues. We want to look at your wastewater treatment plant. We want to look at everything to see if there are some savings there that you can capture to fund other things, okay? The second is, we do this study, we're going to look under this hood, we're going to bring a report back to you in 30 days with some recommendations. Here's what we found. Here's what you can do. And it can be done with self-funded. In other words, everything we're going to look at, we'll make sure that savings will pay for that. There's two buckets of money on savings. One is energy savings and operational savings. So I want to take a look at that from a financial perspective, because we know you're spending money on stuff. It's just the nature of the beast as you run a city, a school district, a county, whatever. So there's money to be saved there as well. And if we come back with a solution and it's co-authored, you like the data, then we implement that solution and there is a path to get to there. What are our competitive advantages? We're a better solution fit for our customer. We're going to find the right solution for you. I'm not here to sell you anything. I want to try to fit the needs of what you're looking for with the best possible solution. The second thing is, and this is really a differentiator as far as Honeywell is concerned, is that we utilize your existing assets. What does that mean? It means, I'm not going to come in here as a company and go, you need to replace this, 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 and this. We're going to take an inventory of your assets and go, you know, if you tweak this a little bit, you still have to spend money on a brand new asset. So we'll look at your asset inventory and find out where you can save some money and where we can approve that operation. And the last one of that category is trust. We hope that we build trust along this process. So Honeywell's unique value, we're a Fortune 100 company, we have superior technological solutions in a global market, yet we have local support just right up the road. So we understand cities, we understand counties, and we understand school districts. So our successes and references, three, and I want to go through them real briefly. The first one's Angleton ISD. I know it's not very pertinent because you're a city, but it's relevant as to how Honeywell has the ability to adapt. So we started working with Angleton ISD about three years ago, and they had aging infrastructure. Their HVAC was aging, their lighting was not up to par, there was access issues. And so we started working on developing a solution for that. And then the Santa Fe shooting happened. And so their whole focus, and wait a minute, time, before we go do this, let's make sure that our schools are safe. And so we adapted and shifted gears, and now they have one of the most sophisticated systems in the state of Texas for keeping their students safe. It's all Honeywell solution, but it was a way that we adapted and we're now engaging back in it. City of Granbury, we're working with them on exactly what we're talking about with you. Infrastructure improvements, water issues. And then Hood County, they're looking at doing a building analytics program with us that will allow them to look at their buildings. And what this product does is will take you from a reactive mode to a predictive mode. And that data is available 24/7 on a dashboard, and we can give that to you. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve?
No, just got a comment real quick. I just want to say, thank you for coming out and doing this presentation today. I want to thank Luis for reaching out a couple of months ago to me and allowing us to bring you out here today. I know there's a lot of places we can do some savings. I know with the new technologies now, whether it's HVAC or whether it's our water meters reading system, maybe lifetime reading that so we can detect leaks at a faster rate would only benefit our city. So I appreciate you coming out and doing this evaluation for us.
So let me clarify that one point with you, just real quick, because what we are going to look at is all of that and then bring all of that data to you, and then together we'll prioritize what you want to do.
Sounds great.
Councilor Sheil.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I don't suggest, you know, rating our lighting right now because we're kind of using some over here down the street. I think that may take us over a bit, but...
No, that's not going to take into account outdoor lighting.
Okay, all right, just making sure. The other thing is, I'm not sure if we want to include the wastewater treatment plant knowing what we're going to be, you know, with the expansion and everything, if we really need to take that into account.
So usually what they'll look at in an energy performance audit with the wastewater treatment plant is our pumps and motors, our electrical system, whether or not we're using variable frequency drives, et cetera. We have looked at that recently and our expansion will include those, but it can't hurt to take a second look if it's at no cost.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're not asking you to, you know, spend some...
And I wouldn't want to ask you to spend money where it's not necessary. I know you've got that expansion. It's a good possibility with that expansion, with some of our subject matter expertise, that we can offer some advice as to making sure that what you are going to build will be built as energy efficient. This is one of the things that we do 24/7.
Okay.
Councilor Tenorio.
I guess my biggest question is, I guess I'd like to see a scope, like I'd want a kind of a checklist of what's being done and I'd like it added to the smart sheets as the progression occurs. I want to see exactly what's happening as it happens. The presentation is great, but what I really want to see is more of an in-depth of what we're really looking at and there has to be some type of a...
And that's what we'll bring back to you.
Well, I understand that. I want to know what you're really looking at.
We're going to be looking at interior lighting, we're going to be looking at building controls if you have some, we're going to be looking at how you can integrate your buildings for the future.
And I guess where I'm going with that is I'd like to see it in writing. I like to have like, I'm a checklist person. And that's all I want to see is a checklist of what's...
That's not a problem.
Yeah, that's all I want to see is something that's going to show me exactly what's going to happen.
I can put together with my engineers a preliminary scope of what we're going to look at when we do that audit.
That's exactly what I'd like to see.
I think, just real quick, Mayor, we have already scaled in some improvements in various areas of the city already. I think when we look at that, that's going to come out in the assessment with regards to lighting. I know that we have scaled in certain types of technology in our water metering already. We have spoken to the service provider for the water metering, and some of the technology we have in place already is already scalable for the upgrades. We're not going to have to do any wholesale retrofits. They'll just, they can be added and replaced in certain pieces, not a wholesale change. So maybe looking at how we can take on some opportunities there for cost savings. I know that in projecting leaks, which has been a consistent issue, especially during the summer times, the vacation times, when we've had some people come back with rather large bills, that had been a discussion and recommendation of the idea of looking at metering with, that are more sensitive so that we can project issues in a more critical way in real time. So that's also an opportunity for that as well. So these are all different technological advances that may fit into the recommendation in and of itself, but we are growing. We're going to have quite a few more buildings that we're going to be in control of, and coming in small as we continue to grow out large is a perfect opportunity. And that's the reason why I brought it forward, and so did Councilmember Rizzo. I'm looking forward to seeing what you bring, so. You said 30 days?
Yes, sir.
Generally?
Thirty days after we actually do walk them, after we physically looked under that.
Okay.
We'll bring back and report to you 30 days after that.
Are you spending most of your time with staff on this?
I'll need somebody from your maintenance department to be able to work with us.
Okay.
And I'll put together a schedule as to how long it will take, might take one day, two days, don't know. I'm getting with my engineer, we'll kind of plot a plan out and get that to you.
Okay.
And I'll work with Scott as well.
All right. Well, you need direction from us to authorize it. Councilmember Coach.
I was just going to make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to engage in a no-cost-energy performance audit by Honeywell.
Second. It's moved by Councilmember Coach, seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion? Thanks to Councilman Villalobos and Councilman Rizzo for bringing this forward. I'm looking forward to seeing what you bring back. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Steve. All right, next up, general discussion. Where are we at, 9:25? Are we getting close? We've been going since 5:00 PM nonstop. Do you all want to do a break now or do you want to?
Push through.
All right, we're going to do an eight-minute break. So we'll try to reconvene at 9:35.
Shall we set our timers?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, general discussion on construction standards for utility companies in the city limits. This is my item. We've had residents in the past bring up some issues with regards to cleanliness standards along Center Street and in our downtown area in particular. One of those items is really kind of caught my attention that we had a contractor come through Center Street and put in essentially telephone poles and hang a fiber optics line and left quite a mess afterwards that I don't believe any amount of rain is going to wash away. Essentially, they dug the poles for the power lines and all of the base material from the ground that was dug up was left around those poles, and there are many of them up and down Center Street and really in multiple areas in our town. And I reached out to staff to try to get a better understanding of why that was the case. I wouldn't think that our policies would allow for a contractor to leave a site unfinished and in a mess. And honestly, I'm pretty convinced that our standards are that power line wires generally are not allowed anymore, at least along I-35. I'm not sure about the remainder of the city, but... So I would just want to ask from Scott if you can give me some feedback on what is, what took place there? Why is that there? What remedies do we have?
I will speak to the extent of my knowledge, and I may have to have Leon come up and join me. I asked Michelle from Tech dot to stick around for this item as well because I know this is something that we've had discussions about, city and Tech dot, and it affects all of us. In the city of Kyle, let me back up. In the state of Texas, there's been a lot of authority granted to private companies, specifically telecoms, but other utilities about installation of utilities within the right-of-way. We have a local ordinance that requires all new utilities, especially electric and telecom to be undergrounded. In any neighborhood, any subdivision, that is the case. Now, the city went, I believe it was a year ago, we changed our easements from PUEs, public utility easements, to MUEs, municipal utility easements. What that allowed us to do was when a PUE is dedicated on a plat, it gives any utility any right to go into that utility or that easement area as long as there's space for the utility. Typically, they'll, you know, they'll do that, they'll come sometimes and talk to us depending on the utility. If it's outside of our right-of-way, or let's say if it's in a PUE that's also overlapping with a state jurisdiction, for example, then they might go to the state and ask for that permit. The MUE gives the city the ownership of that easement in its entirety, and then we have the ability to grant whether or not the utility comes in. We also have negotiated with more recent utilities, whenever they're going to locate within our right-of-way or our easements, that they give us a formal heads-up and we will look and make sure that that won't interfere with future plans of the city. On grandfathered areas, though, it's a little different. So for example, what you just spoke about on Center Street from Rebel to Old Stagecoach, those poles that were recently installed just replaced existing poles. So technically, you know, as long as they're replacing their infrastructure, they basically have the ability to come in, in that PUE and replace and upgrade their existing infrastructure. So the city basically didn't even learn about the project until they were out there moving on it, right, replacing poles. As I mentioned, the state gives fairly broad authority to some utilities to locate in state right-of-way a couple of years ago, and now again on 150 we're seeing, and on 2770, we have seen new poles just go up overnight. And we, you know, they never came to us. We reach out to Tech dot, who says, you know, we have very little authority to restrict the erection of those poles. And we have pulled out our local ordinance. We have said you cannot install new poles without coming and talking to us, or ever really it's restricted. And they have then trumped us with the state statute, which allows them in PUE or state right-of-way to erect those poles. And that's kind of where we are at this point. So I know there are some cities like Austin, large cities, that have a utility committee where they'll meet from a staff level, they'll reach out to all the utilities, and every couple of weeks or month or whatever, they'll all sit down and talk about future projects and go over, you know, planned areas within those easements to see where space might exist, see how those are going to be installed. With power companies and overhead telecom, usually they will always install poles, and if they have the right to, even if the city asks, they won't underground those unless we do cost share participation on those. And that, you know, the cost is astronomical when you underground utilities. So they don't have a real incentive to do it if legally they're not compelled to do so by the state. Only way we can compel them, again, is in an MUE that we own, and it's not a state-granted franchise like to a telecommunications company.
Okay, so the way I see it, there's two issues, and so one is whether or not we, as a city, would be favorable to those poles going in. The second is cleanliness standard as it relates to the construction of the project and leaving a big mess behind. So I think that there's one kind of, you know, eyesight that while I would prefer for it not to be in namely those poles, there's another kind of...
It, it seems that we've had a contractor come in and, you know, not express through their actions any commitment to doing quality work. And so I'm trying to understand what, what can we do to enforce that? What are their standards? Do they have none?
Yeah, no.
There must be some kind of standards for them cleaning up after themselves.
The, the standard PUE and MUE language states that those utilities need to restore the property back to original condition before they started the work. So clearly, they install a new pole, they create, you know, mounds of dirt there, they are supposed to remove that dirt. If there was any detriment to the grass area, they're supposed to re-saw that area. If they cut through somebody's driveway or sidewalk, the city sidewalk, then they are supposed to restore that back to original condition. That is part of the easement language and we have the ability to enforce that on them.
In a PUE or an MUE?
Correct.
Is that where this pole, these poles in particular?
These, these poles would be in a public utility easement in the right-of-way on Center Street, yes.
Okay, so we do have enforcement options. So what, what can, what, what do you need from us to give you the enforcement options, you know, or capability that you need to get that contractor to come back out and clean up their mess?
Well, I know we have had a conversation with them. It's been a little while. They did send out a crew and they cleaned up about 50%. So let, we will go back and talk to them again and let them know that they did not finish the job. That's clearly the next step. Code enforcement would be the, the next option to enforce the, you know, just the codes of the city which include the, the PUE enforcement. So that will be the follow-up step to that.
Okay, I'd, I have a motion to make, but I'll, I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to say if we're going to bring code enforcement, is there a way that we can implement fines if they don't clean it in a timely manner?
I mean, if your, if your codes support the, that there's a violation of the offense, then you could implement fines.
It'll go through the standard code process, which is typically a verbal or written and a citation.
Okay, just something to encourage them to get there quicker.
They've, they've already had a verbal, so, you know, we can, we would go straight for the written at this point.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sheel.
Okay, that's how we rectify this one. How do we see rectifying it in the future? You know, when a, a company is done, do we know when they're going to be done so that we can maybe inspect that site to make sure that they did leave it as to the way they were supposed to and if they didn't, then get on it quickly versus having to wait for, you know, a resident to complain about it or, or something.
Again, I'm going to look back at Leon because I don't, I don't know how frequently we're even informed of these projects, where they are, you know, they, because it's a public utility easement and they're operating within their right in the easement, in many cases, we're, we're unaware of, you know, where they are and, and when they're done with the job.
See if I can help a little bit here. Leon Barbas, City Engineer. My understanding is we have a permitting system online at Public Works and these contractors and that are working for the various utilities should be contacting Public Works through that system and telling them what their plan is, what their work plan is and what they're planning to do, where it's going to be and what they're going to do on that particular site. The key that you have to remember is that it's one thing to get that information, but we still need to follow up and inspect. So that means our inspectors are going to be more diligent in following these contractors and paying attention to what they're doing. So we just need to focus more heavily with our inspectors on those contractors. If I had to follow up with someone right now on the one on Center Street, I saw those mounds of dirt and I kept wondering, when are they coming back to clean it up because it looked pretty unsightly? I would just call PEC, the contacts, the few contacts that I have and say, I need some help here. Who can I talk to getting this cleaned up? That's the first thing I would have done. But again, I don't know when that contractor came in. My only regret is that gee, if we had known that they were going to do something that major, what if we had been able to maybe participate with them to maybe put that underground? You know, I just really, after I saw the poles go up, it's just too late. I wish we had known before. So it'd be nice. In my tenure at City of Austin, we had the Utility Clearance Committee that was set up through ordinance and I think at least weekly they meet with all the 20-plus, 30-plus utilities and get their plans and see what they're up to mainly because of traffic. You need to control traffic, make sure it's maintained while you're doing all this utility work. But it's very helpful to find out what those various utilities are doing so that you can plan for that. I know that I've seen contractors on sections of road where, what are they doing there? And they're, they're installing fiber in there and we're not seeing it, we're not watching it, are we inspecting it? One situation where I know of, Plum Creek, they allowed a gas contractor to go in, in Kohler's, place a gas line and the previous manager told them, put it here in this spot. And then a few years later, when we were out there trying to put a water line in, that manager was telling the developer, future developer in a nearby project, well, go ahead and put the line, your line here because the gas is over there. And the developer kept telling him, no, the gas line's not where it's supposed to be. So we don't watch the utilities when they're doing their work, neither does Tech Dot. Nobody's watching these folks when they're putting their lines in. And if you tell them five feet off the right-of-way line, do we know they did that? We don't even get ass builds. We don't even know what they put in the ground. So that's why we have to spend money sometimes on subsurface utility engineering to go find out where their lines are and make sure that they placed them where they said they were. And that's a cost to us. So it's, it's very frustrating. Utilities have always, my whole career, utilities have always been an issue, whether it's new construction or trying to build something around those utilities, it's always an issue because sometimes they're not where they're supposed to be and that's, that's unfortunate. I don't know if I helped or not, but that's just my view.
We've identified the contractor and the utilities putting them in. Okay, so now we have a written communication that's going to go out. We'd like to also make the request for them to come in here and present what their plan is and, and their timeline for their project.
I think they're finished.
They're finished.
I mean, their pole's there, there's nothing hooked up to them, they're just an eyesore, they're grotesque where they're at. I don't see anything running through off of FM 150. I see, I pass them every day. I see double or triple poles somewhere and there's no action. There, there has been no, no, no action taken at all. We just have them close to the street now, on top of the ones that are behind it. And I know we have some development and some things coming in and we have to abide by that, that we're going to be having some developments coming through, but I mean, I'd, I'd like to, like to hear what they're doing because it doesn't look like there's any action taking place.
Yeah, we, I was referring to Center Street, I think that one's done, but yeah, on 150, I believe it's Fiber Light that's doing overhead fiber optic lines. Now that maybe they're usually a third-party contractor or subcontractor to a large, you know, telecom like AT&amp;T or Sprint, et cetera. So we can ask if they would come and talk about the project. They might refer AT&amp;T or, you know, the contracting.
Definitely would like to know because if it's AT&amp;T, then maybe their government relations or if it's any of the other ones, their government relations. And I guarantee you that that phone call to them, letting them know that we're completely dissatisfied and it could affect service in the future, that they would like to come and discuss what their plans are.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to track down that project.
Councilmember Sheel.
Okay, so we have this one particular project, but what can we do to avoid these things in the future? One of the things that I heard Leon talk about was what the city of Austin did. Is that something that's viable for us to do? Especially considering the amount of growth that we are experiencing at this time and I don't see slowing up anytime soon.
I think at minimum, we can, we can put a flag on any sort of permits that are coming in for utilities and, you know, take a look at those. Up to this point, you know, I haven't seen those clearly, you know, it's done in Public Works, but it sounded like, you know, for now, we need to elevate those and, and bring those forward. So I'll talk to Public Works about doing that.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think the first thing we need to do is strengthen our ordinance right now. I think it's chapter 38 if I, if I remember correctly, but because of the lack of staff way back when, the authority to monitor all that type of work, permits and fees and all that kind of stuff was given to the building official and that's really not where it belongs. It belongs with Public Works Department and/or Engineering. So I think we need to strengthen the ordinance and create this committee. It's, it's time-consuming, yes, it's going to take time and staffing to put that together, but we need to move forward and get that done.
What chapter was that? I'm sorry, Leon.
I believe it's 38.
38.
But if you'll read it carefully, you'll see it's the building official that's tasked with all those duties and that's not where it belongs.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a three-part motion that I'm getting ready to make, so prepare yourselves. I'd like to make a motion, you said that, I'm sorry, you said the company is Fiber Light that, that we're referencing. You feel 100% on that?
That's on 150, that's what I found out from Tech Dot.
Right on there.
Center Street or 150?
The, the.
The 150 project.
Are you talking about FM 150?
Yes.
I believe it's fine.
Yeah, the Center Street was Line Tech, I believe, that was the third-party there.
And they've gotten all theirs cleaned up?
No, no, Line Tech, they're, they're still, they're at the base of some of those poles.
Okay.
I believe that's Line Tech.
They're, they're who I'm referencing. The, the pole, the cleanup, lack of cleanup is on Center Street. That's why I referenced it in regards to downtown. All right, I'm going to change the motion, but in these motion, I'm referencing both of those projects. So I'd like to make a motion to pursue every option to enforce our project standards with both the companies that have been referenced here tonight. And I would like to direct staff to develop a strategic plan for engaging utility companies and whatever that form that can, that you can bring back to us, including recommendations for ordinance revisions if necessary, looking for a plan for how to improve in this particular area. And then to engage Fiber Light in particular to understand the, the company's background and what specifically they are trying to accomplish and see if we can develop a better way to work with them in the future. Second. All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Were those motions clear? Basically enforce immediately in the shortest possible timeline to get to resolution and get these sites cleaned up, figure out how we can fix the problem, bring that back to us as a council. And then to Councilmember Villalobos' point, help us better understand in particular what Fiber Light Company is after and if there are ways that we might, can engage them through the vendors that they are supplying to. So any further discussion? It's been, Councilmember Sheel.
Do you have a specific timeline for the, the standards? You said rather quickly, but what is rather, I mean?
I don't have the ability to, to give them a timeline because I don't know how much it's going to take. So it's going to go into smart cheats and it'll be something I think that, that we can monitor, the enforcement that is in the shortest timeline that is possible. So.
Okay.
Anything else? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Leon. All right, next up, first reading and ordinance submitting chapter 53 of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 1.122 acres of land from community commercial to retail services for 711 Old North Highway. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a request for cross-plants, if you're familiar with it, on Old 81 north of Center Street. It actually exists on more than one parcel. One of their parcels is currently zoned CC. They would like to upzone that to something more consistent with a highway commercial zoning like RS. This is recommended in the comprehensive plan, staff supports it and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to nothing in favor of it.
Okay, this item has a public hearing. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. It's now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Does, do you have anything else to add or any questions or comments? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tornarios. Any further discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 18, an ordinance submitting chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 23.08 acres of land from agricultural to PUD for properties located at 1701, 03, 11 and 13 and 17 on North Burleson Street. This item also has a public hearing. Mr. Coons.
This item is quite a bit more involved. This is a, on the surface somewhat complicated, but an excellent, an excellent project for the city of Kyle. We've been working with the applicant for a number of months to refine the application. The request is to take land that's located between Marketplace and Interstate Highway 35, which is currently zoned ag, and transform that into a larger mixed-use community. The project itself is exactly in line with the tenants of the comprehensive plan. This is a transition area that transitions from the city's downtown to the retail activity center that is located to the north. So this is a transition district that's expected to ramp up intensity of land uses and density as you move from the south to the north. The, the way this will be done is as a PUD, a planned unit development wherein most of the tenants of the city's CBD 2 zoning will be utilized for bulk standards and most of the uses permissible in MXD will be allowable for the businesses and services that occur there with a, an addition of single-family residential will also be a part of this. So this will be a true live-work-play development. The applicant's here tonight and has put together a reasonably extensive presentation to explain it infinitely better than I can because he's much more vested in it than I. But it should be stated that staff unconditionally supports the application as it's come forward, as did our Planning and Zoning Commission a week ago. So I'll make myself available for questions. I would recommend you ask them of the applicant.
All right, one second, Jeff. This item has a public hearing, so if there's no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item that is not the applicant? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Barton, we're all ears.
Thanks very much, Mayor, Councilmembers. Jeff Barton, representing the applicants. You've got my sympathy. I've been on your side of the table, it's late night, so thank you for your time. I am Jeff Barton. I am one of the founders of Gap Strategies. We're an urban planning firm and town planning firm actually located here in Kyle and just outside of Kyle, but we work all over the state. With me is Sarah Bosa, planner in our firm. We handed out some letters of support for the project that you've got. I mislabeled them, item 17, so they're in front of you. We're here tonight to talk about the item in green that's labeled agricultural today there on your screens. And I want to tell you just a little bit about the zoning itself, why we think a PUD is right, a planned unit development is right for the project, talk about a little of those details. And even though this is a zoning case and not a site plan or a plat, since it is a complicated PUD, I want to give you a preview of what we're planning on the site and some of the details behind it. Again, where we're located is here on, on the core transition area. That seems to have distorted a little bit on the slide, but it should be right on I-35. It's visible from I-35 between Marketplace and Burleson, as staff said. And I take this moment to really thank your staff for working so diligently with us over a number of months. Our plan is to make this central and walkable. You were talking about that with some of your consultants here tonight about the value of that and that's certainly the plan here. It's 23 acres, there may be some additional acreage added to the project as we go. It's located on an historic family farm and as you heard, it honors the comprehensive plan, we think, in both spirit and, and practice. The adjoining properties around our green zone there today are already zoned for intensive commercial use. We have I-35 and railroad tracks and transmission lines in the area. So this intensive use that we're planning here is not only consistent with your comp plan and the core transitional zone, but with existing uses as well. And again, apologize, I think some of this distorted a little bit in the transfer, but this is in that area of those bustling town centers that you got, that you, we've got at the, at Kyle Parkway and almost directly halfway between that and downtown Kyle and is intended to knit those two together in both in the, in your comp plan and in our efforts. It'll give a sense of place to the project and provides needed office space, one of the top priorities identified by your economic development team. It also fills an upper-end housing niche that really doesn't exist today in Kyle and provides something different. We didn't start off with a PUD. We looked at mixed use, we looked at a number of other categories where we could go, but none of them really provided that flexibility. So as you've heard, we work closely with your staff. So as you've heard, we work closely with your staff in developing a PUD ordinance. Your PUD ordinance does provide for flexible alternative procedure for imaginative and innovative designs. That's certainly something that we tried to create here. And it stipulates that under proper circumstances, when it meets the spirit of the comp plan, you can vary from strict enforcement of certain details of your existing zoning district so long as you meet an equal or higher level, and we think we've met a higher level throughout. So the PUD really meets all of these issues that are laid out in your own ordinance, from safety to preservation of the natural environment. Today, what we have in Kyle is this limited choice of housing options, at least in parts of the city, in a shorter, shortage of local office space, particularly microspace or space for starting businesses, again, something that you discussed a little while earlier this evening, and in need of a greater and more diverse tax base. Going to a PUD here not only helps us meet the goals of the comprehensive plan, but helps us meet those existing conditions. Your comp plan calls for retail office and multifamily units in this area in the Kyle Transition Zone, or at least in the city, it's as a whole, and it calls in the core transition area for this more intensive use and the link between downtown, and calls it out as a possible place for mixed use. This gives you an idea of what we're looking at for the, the project itself. It would be in two phases, north of the creek, that's the small creek, what we call Little Word Creek, and between Plum Creek would be phase two. The first phase that we're really focused on is south of the creek. You'll see in red, that's the property we already own. To the south, there's some additional park, property owned by the Parkers, who we're, we're negotiating with them about either cooperating on a development or buying some of their land to extend the development there. This is a historic place. It's the homestead for Lex and Lee's, where we're my grandparents. So we're not just an urban planning firm, this is family property. So we're trying to put our money where our mouth is in terms of living up to the highest standards of kind of cutting-edge planning. Lex and Lee's were to help found the library here in Kyle, when the only bank at the time went under in the Great Depression. He helped put his money, he put his own money in to keep it alive. You guys, or at least previous city councils, have honored them with a plaque outside this building. They used to run the Bon Ton General Store that was here. And they're part of six generations of our family that's been involved in Kyle. You were talking about downtowns earlier. Four generations of my family, with my son now running a business in downtown, have had offices on either Center Street or Main Street in Kyle. You guys, my mother today works in helping the library. They helped found the, 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 the house for Catherine Ann Porter down here and have been involved in civic affairs all their life. You guys named your citizenship award after my father for his involvement in the city. And none of that really matters to this project. All kinds of people, including you, all give tons of time to the city. But what it, what I do want to call to your attention is it means that we are not fly-by-night developers, that we're really vested in this community and vested in bringing quality development to the community. It would be a legacy project for us. My mother doesn't have a traditional pension. She wanted, she could have sold this land. What she wanted to do was develop in a way that would bring a sense of place and meaning to her life and to Kyle, and to keep her grandparents and then her grandchildren, the next generation, involved in the land in Kyle. We developed this with slight constraints in mind, looking at creeks and the natural environment, and then the roads that bound it to really come up with a unique plan that we think is the missing link to provide sustainability and amenities in a sense of overall integration that doesn't exist in most neighborhoods in, anywhere in northern Hayes County today with, and it meets a lot of these issues that you heard about tonight and that you've heard about from the Urban Land Institute, others of what people are looking for and are hungry for as they move to small towns, that, that sense of community that you guys are striving so hard to help create. The PUD enables that by allowing us to address mixed use and to really bring the kind of development that you see in places like Miller, around the square in San Marcos, and the existing downtown in Kyle, and in some other neighborhoods that y'all are working to create, things that would be impossible to create in a traditional zoning on this particular site. All of these kinds of great regional places have this sense of walkability, about activeness, about live, work, and play, as Howard referred to in this, public space, public sphere, integrated with local, and that's what we're trying to create here through a mix of uses, as you see, everything from mixed-use buildings to multiplex lots designed to look like larger homes, garage apartments for affordability, town homes that would hit an upper-end market that would serve, say, Seton and the Medical District, kinds of multifamily that don't really exist in Kyle. We'll talk about that a little bit more. We've got a nature trail that's already been approved by the Kyle Parks Board, and public art. You see these stars represent public art throughout. So this is really phase one, that would be focusing on tonight, all land that we own, or not tonight, sorry, this is a zoning case, but that's the first phase that we're really focused on. As we said, we're working with the property owner to perhaps expand this, and just reminding you that you'll get another bite of the apple as we come back for preliminary plans and site plans and that sort of thing. We've done a lot of work with architects and engineers already. We've spent quite a bit of our own money to try, to try and bring you something that's not just the backside of an envelope, but really a well-thought-out, a plan that meets your designs and, and our needs both. This gives you a sense of the aesthetic that we're looking at for outdoor gathering places. This is Radio Coffee in South Austin, where we imagine my grandmother's old house being converted into kind of the center square for this community that would have this kind of outdoor sense. And things like murals, walkability, in the bottom left here is the first mixed-use building that we've already designed through architecture, and then town homes and a kind of a, a, a close-knit neighborhood there in public open spaces and parks around the creeks. Again, a little bit more about how we see the central square beginning to lay out as we move into the next level of design, what the residential homes might look like. We're negotiating with three builders right now, the one that we're working with most closely designed. Some of these, and in the bottom right, you see multiplex lots that are really designed to look like large homes, much like you see in Miller, so that you get some affordability, you get some rentable spaces, you get some density there, but it doesn't feel like, say, the traditional duplex or triplex that you used to see. Again, along the creek and on the rooftops, we have open spaces planned in, have already worked with your Parks Department for that, and we've got green and sustainability measures throughout, including solar. Just some more examples of inspiration of kind of the palette that we're working with, with our architects and design professionals, and trying to bring a new standard of development here. This on the left is the first mixed-use building, so it's a little bit more of an intimate kind of feel than you're used to seeing with apartment complexes. This would be office, excuse me, office space on the ground floor. Some of it will be anchored office space, most of it will be shared office spaces, the kind of incubators that you're talking about, small spaces with shared amenities and conference rooms that give small businesses a chance to thrive in Kyle. Again, it's what your economic development team has told us is perhaps most needed in the city. The next part of the second floor is that as well, and then the rest of the second floor and the third floor are more intimate kind of apartment units, just eleven units, fit in with an amenity deck on, on the roof. We've, we have a history of trying to do high-quality work in Kyle. The building on the right is the building that we built here back in two thousand and eleven, the first multi-story and first mixed-use building in the modern history of Kyle. It won awards from Envision Central Texas for sustainability and good planning in the city. Here's the kind of materials that we're looking at, merging some of that prairie aesthetic in Kyle with the gateway to the hill country. This is really just to show you that we're already hard at work on the mixed-use building. Again, that would be our first mixed-use building on the site that we hope to commence soon, and some views of what that might look like with an amenity deck on the roof, for example, something that really doesn't exist in Kyle. These would be access through a lobby and elevators that go up rather than your traditional garden apartments with a green space and walkability around. So we are asking for twenty-eight residential units to the acre. That's consistent with some of the other multifamily in the area, but we actually think this will be a little bit lower because we're not trying to squeeze apartments in that hit this new niche, so it'll probably range from about twenty-two down to four to six per acre, but averaging somewhere in between. Your core transition area calls for fifteen or greater units per acre, so we think we're right in line with that. And it'll all be designed with street, complete streets and context-sensitive designs, so the streets really make sense to the community, help calm traffic there. We're looking at head-in parking, similar to what you see in the CBD, so that it gets this really community feel of the center of a downtown neighborhood with street trees and screening. There'll also be primary streets and then alleyways with back, backloaded off-the-alleys, all designed appropriately there and working with your engineering and public works department to determine exactly what those standards will be and which of those will be public and which will be private. All of that, we think, can be done without creating large parking lots, which will retract, detract from that sense of place and being, and walkability, so that we have head-in parking throughout up and down the streets instead of big parking lots with buildings back behind them. We'll have a very strong street front throughout the project, and we think that still gives us enough parking, especially utilizing shared-use parking across the project to work well and activate things like the coffee shop and the first thing downtown. We hope to start work early this next year, and it'll probably be late spring, really before we get through all our approvals, we'll all work through the issues, and then be open for renting in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Again, it's all designed with a long-term commitment in mind because not only do we live here, and this is, we expect it to continue to be our home. My mother continue, plans to continue to live on the place. So we plan to build and hold as much as we can. We can't afford to do that with all of it, we'll sell part of it. But again, we are investing our own treasure, what we have in, in the project and plan to build and hold and stay there. Finally, it meets a whole slew of goals from your comp plan in a way that we think virtually nothing else, at least that's on the ground today in Kyle, does. And we've already invested a lot in a professional team that's doing that. We have a local Latino builder who will be doing the construction on the original projects. We've got a lot of local folks involved in every phase, and our architect, in fact, is a, is a distant family member who's involved in the project. In summary, we, we're convinced that it meets the goals and the spirit of Kyle's site plan. It integrates mixed-use development, it creates local jobs both afterwards and during the construction, and we have a local team of experts with a long-term commitment to the project. Thanks for your time. I know it's late, I appreciate your attention, be glad to answer any questions about it. We're very excited about it.
Jeff, I was willing to let you talk for at least ten more minutes if you wanted to. I have all kinds of feels about what just took place. Councilmember Sheel.
This is already a flood-prone area with the creeks and, you know, the low-water crossing on Burleson and everything. With this amount of impervious cover, how do you see that affecting the drainage of the water?
It's a great question. You're, you, the city already plans to close off Burleson there, so we're cooperating with you all to put a cul-de-sac there, or, that's my understanding of the long run, once you're, all your projects are complete. So we'll take our primary entrance off of Marketplace or through I thirty-five and back that way by the roundabout. We've got hydrologists engaged right now to try and understand better what's going on with Atlas fourteen and how that will affect us. So we're, we, we know that we're going to give up a lot of land in between the two creeks. We showed you what we had planned. Atlas fourteen came out since then, so in that land, particularly between the two creeks, we may have to give up a fair amount of that in order to create some detention to help on the first phase. And we are, we not only have a civil firm engaged, we have hydrology experts engaged to assist that civil in assessing that, so we can give your engineers material that they're really confident in, data that they're confident in. And we'll have two detention sites. We already have two detention ponds built in. They're green so that homes can face the green. Excuse me, I'm getting a little bit of whatever Patrick Rose had there. And alley-loaded lots behind those.
Okay, thank you.
So we're, we are aware of it, paying a lot of attention to it.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Barton? I, I'd like to say that, you know, I've been doing this for four years now, approaching, and I have met, engaged, and interacted with a lot of people, bringing a lot of plans for projects they want to build. I have, I have yet to see someone present something as dead center to the comprehensive plan, our style guide, the spirit of mixed use as what you just presented today. I, I don't, I, I, I can't count the amount of developers that tell me this project won't work. This project is unviable, cannot happen. And when those, when those developers come to me in the future, I'm going to timestamp this, and I'm going to say, you watch that, and then we'll talk. And I'm not even kidding. Thank you for, for demonstrating that the vision that we have for our city and the development patterns that take into account affordability, live-work-play, use of space, consideration for the environment, consideration for the quality of life, consideration for the historical, dot, 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 spinning wheel, the spinning wheel just took, took place in my head. But you've obviously demonstrated for a very long time that you have a commitment from a design and development perspective to the City of Kyle with the Barton Building in downtown. And so I just can't sing enough praise for the project that you've presented to us. And so I, I want to thank you and make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation as well. I concur with the words of the mayor. This is phenomenal, and thank you for giving us kind of the timeline and start as well. This is exactly what we're looking at, and you clearly paid attention to a lot of detail, not only what was said tonight, but historically what we've been trying to do in Kyle. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. It, it is harder to do this, there's no doubt, and it takes longer, but I think together we can prove that it can be done.
It truly exemplifies the investment in the community. And I think that if you can exemplify that, then it's a model for others that want to do work here. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tenorio.
You know, I actually know a lot of history about your family's property just because I've spent so much time with your mom and dad, and, and I really think it's kind of cool that you're going to get to share your, your grandmother's house. I love walking through that house and seeing the beautiful murals on the walls and, and being a part of that. And, you know, you know, I, I've spent a lot of time in that house and, you know, I can still feel, I mean, like, I walk into the formal dining room and you can, I can see your grandmother painting the walls, you know? And I, I, I'm very tickled that that's going to be something that's going to be able to be shared with our whole community, because, you know, right now, since it's a private residence, not everybody can, can utilize, or can view the history. And, you know, knowing that on the tennis courts is where the dances were held, and knowing, you know, what was happening at the, at the pool, and, and always knowing that that was such a social place for the City of Kyle. So I look forward to seeing this project come to fruition, and I look forward to seeing a whole new set of families being able to enjoy the property and the rich history.
Thank you.
I might add that I, the, I, just from a land use standpoint, the PUD zoning, I do think is appropriate because we've, we work to put a mixed-use zoning together that really doesn't, doesn't work. And so I, I know that's on Howard's list to try to, to maybe try to develop some additional nuance to that zoning, but this is a, very clearly in the spirit of what we think mixed-use zoning could be. And so if it, if we need to call it a PUD, that's fine with me. So, anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Uh, Councilmember Riz, do you got something to say? I'm sorry, I missed your phrase. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. No, I lost my voice. Sorry about that. I just want to say thank you on the project and thank you for working with staff. I think we've got a great staff, but working together on projects, I think that's where we can excel on, on projects like this. So thank you for utilizing the staff and taking their feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up, agenda item number.
The last item, seventeen, and this item, eighteen. Since they were unanimous, would you like them to be finally passed?
Is there any objection to item seventeen and eighteen being finally passed?
No.
All right, seeing none, they are finally passed. Agenda item number nineteen, consider a request for an appeal by Doug Christie to construct a ninety-six-hundred-square-foot building on the property located at one sixty-one Weldon Johnson Way in the I thirty-five overlay district. Mr. Coons.
Yes, sorry. This is an appeal of a decision that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission. You're no doubt familiar that we have an overlay district that is applied to all property within fifteen-hundred feet of the outer boundaries of the I thirty-five interstate right-of-way. This property is located at one sixty-one Weldon Johnson Way, which is along the northbound Frontage Road, south of town. The, the request was to construct a ninety-six-hundred-square-foot building, and the expectation was that the architecture and the, the bulk itself would significantly mirror the property that's directly to the south, which you might be familiar with. It's the Budget Rental Car Building. If you look in the staff report, you can see some photos of the building itself. It's a mix of r-panel steel, it's got a pitched roof, and there are some, well, actually, there's a picture of it right there. This is the existing building at one eighty-one Weldon Johnson Way, and you can see that there are some, some decorative. some decorative stone, there is a little bit of screening along the one side of the building. At any rate, in October of this year, the gentleman came forward for approval from the P&amp;Z for permission to construct the structure. Once you're in that I-35, there is what's termed a conditional use approval, it's actually not, it's just an architectural review, where they look at the standards and the materials and the colors that are enumerated in the zoning ordinance, and those criteria are used to determine how close the outside appearance of the building will be to the standards described therein. It was found, after a staff review and after the first meeting in October, that the building did not meet the standards, did not meet the minimum standards of the I-35 overlay. From a use standpoint, it did, but from an aesthetic standpoint, it did not. So the item was postponed for a month, and the applicant was instructed to try and make it look closer, to do more architectural features that would meet the criteria. When they came back in November, they had made no changes, and wanted the aesthetics themselves to move forward on their own merits, and the Planning and Zoning Commission moved unanimously to deny the application. Typically, these decisions are made at P&amp;Z, that's it, that's moved forward, but they argued with the interpretation of that portion of Chapter 53, and therefore, the mayor and council is the appellate board to hear the next step. That's how we got here tonight.
Okay. Anything you want to add? Your recommendation is...
The recommendation would be that the P&amp;Z action was appropriate, based upon the merits of the text of the zoning ordinance. I believe at this point, your options would be to affirm the previous decision, reverse the previous decision, in which case you would be siding with the applicant, or you can remand it, meaning it would go full-cycle deferral back through P&amp;Z, where everybody gets the chance to do it all over again.
Is the applicant here?
I didn't believe they were, no, they're not.
Okay. Any thoughts? I'm more along the lines of affirming, yeah, affirming P&amp;Z's ruling, so I'd like to make a motion to affirm P&amp;Z's ruling to deny. It's been motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, is there any further discussion? So an aye vote here is a vote to affirm a denial. Is that clear enough, Paige? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. All right, the next four agenda items, we're going to need to step into executive session, so I'd like to, do I have to motion to move into executive session halfway through? I always forget, sometimes I feel like I do, sometimes I don't, so...
Yes, a motion and cited to consult with legal counsel.
Do we have to read all the executive session language again?
No, just to consult with legal counsel.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to consult legal counsel on agenda items number 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five to zero. Next up, agenda item number 20 and 21, we're going to bring them up simultaneously. Mr. Coons. It's consider a possible action to approve a development agreement with Endeavor, and an ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning of approximately 14.36 acres of land, from retail services to multifamily residential R-33 for property located within the 3,400 block of Kyle Crossing. This is, this is second reading, we, on the, you want to go through the development agreement? You want me to go through it?
Yes.
The development agreement with Endeavor allows for multifamily use in the zoning area, provides restrictions and protections for the residents who would take up a lease there, making sure that the quarry would be noticed to them, and provides a meaning for accountability of that process, also establishes some standards, the Endeavor project is one that we're all anxious about and excited at the same time, because the overall project, not just with the multifamily, when you look at it from an entire site plan point of view, creates a project that can have a pretty significant impact on our community. I'm going to make a motion on it. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning, conditioned upon the development agreement establishing development standards for Lot 1A, being executed by the property owner in NADG LFI Kyle LP within the next 30 days, and to approve the development agreement establishing development standards for Lot 1A.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Coach, is there any further discussion? So that's a motion on both items. Where's Paige, is that okay?
Your motion, I'm sorry. I have a question.
I read your motions verbatim, but in the form of one motion on two items, is that okay?
That's fine, so you're approving the zoning and the development agreement with the same motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries five to two. All right, I'm going to bring up next, agenda item number 22 and 23. 22 is consider approval of a development agreement establishing development standards for the Brooks Ranch subdivision, and the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 47.3 acres of land from RS to R-13 for the property at 1,200 to 1,600 block of Rebel Drive. This is a second reading on the zoning, this item's come back with a development agreement. Would you like to bring that forward, or you want me to do the same thing?
Please.
The folks at Brooks Ranch have done a lot of work to try to put together a residential product that's consistent and compliant with the residential style guide in as much as they can, given the constraints of the overall project. They have conceded many points to staff and council, and agreed to create a pocket park in addition to the over two acres of parkland they have on the west side. They've also agreed to a 10-foot buffer between the folks that live along Mather and the back portion of their property. In the event that the brush is cleared, they have agreed to plant three-inch-caliper trees along that section as well, and have limited the amount of two-story homes going back there to 25% of the overall project. I'm trying to remember what else is in there.
The additional park that's further south in the project?
The pocket park.
The pocket park.
Yeah, the park dedication.
Did I not say that?
I didn't catch it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, additional park, it's a challenging project, but I think the, I think we've got to something that, while nobody is going to be overly thrilled with it, I think everybody has demonstrated a certain degree of compromise, which makes it something that I can also support. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, a motion to approve the zoning, conditioned upon the development agreement between City of Kyle, Texas, and D&amp;L Investments LLC, or As signs, being executed by the developer and Blackburn within 30 days, and the development agreement between the City of Kyle, Texas, and D&amp;L Investments LLC, or As signs, with the concept plan updated to be consistent with Section 2.02. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for reaching out to the residents, to staff, working with them closely, and doing your best to make sure that all your neighbors had a little bit of input, really appreciate you bringing this project forward and working with everyone, and just want to say thank you.
I second that, I appreciate you all reaching out to our residents in the area and working with them. I know it hasn't been easy, and I know you all haven't had an easy road with us either, so I know sometimes compromise is needed to make these projects work, and so I thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
All right, motion carries six to zero. Next up, agenda item number 24, improve an ordinance amending the city's budget by $112,000, $80,000 which was budgeted, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shields, is there any discussion? Councilmember V. Lobos?
No.
Oh, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries six to one. Next up, city manager's report.
Council, you have a TERS meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we, Councilmember Tenorio.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember V. Lobos. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.